And I'm like, that's.
You you actually. You're like in this small chair.
Aww.
Cindy Augustine. She's like, I don't wanna call.
How are you?
Yeah, how are you?
Back to where you at?
Oh, no, I like this.
Yeah.
He said.
But.
Yeah, you're right.
Hey, this is my resume, you just.
I do. So it's not funny.
Yeah.
Pretty awesome.
Yeah, that's that's.
There are good.
Thank you.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, you know.
Give you a. Okay, you want me to send you the number or do you? I don't know what should I do? He thought it was done today.
Usually that's a good guess.
Okay, everyone, welcome to the workshop. Uh, Madam Clerk, if you could please call roll.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Mr. Heribas.
Here. Uh, we are going to. Have our regular. You know, we're gonna suspend that. No, no, we're gonna leave.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we're gonna get you sure. Out so sure if you continue to do her work.
For your help.
And she has a lot of it to do, believe me.
It's fun. And I'll be Sarah Taylor, Commissioner's Office, I'll keep this very, very short and sweet. Um, we're getting some emails from people. Who might have a little bit of ARPA money, these grants that we've. Granted last year, they might have a little bit of money and they're asking for um other uses. So I did email the attorney, I've not had a response yet. Um, a little concerned that we're going to have a lot of that where we're getting bombarded and we're contacting the attorney again and.
We don't need to talk to the attorney, we have memorandums of understanding if the money comes back where it can go already. We already did that work.
Okay, so all of these places like this was by an historical society, they need to send us the residual and send it back. Okay.
If if when their scope of their project's done. They return it back to us if it's one of the ones we had a memorandum of understanding like the fairgrounds.
No, that's I those are different, I count those as.
Other ones that come in, they come back in and then we can re. Establish and we we did. Vote through, I believe it was uh Viana's ambulance and or was Viana? Think buying his ambulance and there were one or two others we approved, we had no money for though. That we can put that money back into that after we get the money back in.
Okay, that that's what I wanted to know because that's just gonna create just a whole another set of problems here. If people aren't having money to what happened was they used um capital funds. To replace their windows and then they wanted to use that for blinds, but then it then they they said no, so I I don't know what's gonna happen. I don't think it was very much money left, but you know, regardless, that that is an issue.
Tonya has been working with you though, in case you do have.
Yes.
We just don't wanna. Beat her up too much because.
I know, I know.
We get a lot of money coming back from her and we don't need to just give you the phone call, free phone call money.
Exactly.
We already asked.
And that's I was not a part of any of it, so I I'm catching up, so I'm sorry, you'll have to bear with me.
You like us.
So all the departments and everybody should go through you, not contact her.
Right.
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 You make them aware of that so they're so we're not getting billed.
Well, they won't go through her, they won't be able to get through to her.
Yeah, they.
But we just can't refer them off to her.
Oh, no, I like I don't like I I asked the question of her, you know, I I said, I'm pretty much, I'm pretty sure I know the answer. I said, but I just wanna a verification because like I said, I was not included in the last.
If they ask, can we put it toward this or that, bring it to us first, because it might be something that we've already approved in the scope of what their initial thing was.
Right.
And there are some that are gonna fit, some that aren't, we gotta prosecutor there to help us with that. True.
And we also, and this is the other part, I think that we need to send reminders out, these people have to file a report when they're done, they have to file an expense report and show us where that money went. We are beholden to U.S. Treasury for us getting the ARPA money and then we. Gave it out, so they have to send a report into us on how they spent it. And I I have, there's a few, but not many. So that's that's something we also have. Um, second item is. Across the street in the courthouse. They did a replacement boiler. What happened was when they tore everything apart, they had a contingency of thirty thousand dollars. They spent that thirty thousand dollars on something they conferred with the judges and maintenance and all that. And when they opened that boiler up, there were some things that were wrong with it that had to be repaired or. Whatnot, so they ultimately ate up that thirty thousand dollars. And as a matter of fact, Bill Hart also had another purchase order for another, I believe it was. Ten thousand, somewhere around oh around that number and. What we have left over is we still owe them like forty five hundred dollars. And then the job is complete, it's done, everything's fixed, it's like a new boiler over there, but. I we do have our uh our small capital improvements account, our four oh three account that still has like hundred forty five thousand dollars. I'm suggesting that we take the money from there to cover the forty five hundred dollars and then we're done.
Yeah, I don't have any. Daryl. Can you elaborate on any of that or just give your name?
Uh, Daryl Donegan, uh, facilities. Uh, so when they opened up the boiler, the uh fire brick inside was in bad condition. Um, it's obviously something they couldn't see prior to the job when they quoted it. When they opened it up, they had to replace it or they couldn't put the boiler back together.
Okay, but we're actually still in a savings from what the original estimate was, even with that in mind, and that would probably incorporate more money. So. Okay.
Yeah, so if I have the approval, I can do a purchase order and get them taken care of and that the job is complete.
We need to do that now. That emergency approval or do we put it on the agenda, what do you want?
I don't think we need to put on the agenda, we can do.
We literally already had, it's just literally. It's something that they. What kind of messed everything up too was they.
Do we have to appropriate the money out of this fund and that fund paid for though?
No, we can directly take it out of four oh three fund. I can write I can write something up and put on.
And Bill Danzo Prosecutor's Office, I don't know, was this originally a contract for that specific amount, if so, there may need to be an amendment to that. Amount on the agenda because.
What messed that up is they did another purchase order from another account to do the fire bricks. That's the one that they they provided me, so I didn't know that.
Okay.
So this it ate up the the thirty thousand contingency, you know, part of what was already allocated.
I guess what I'm saying is that this was a this was a project that I think was bid out, right?
Yes.
There was it was bid out and awarded for a specific amount, so this would likely be a change order is what I'm saying, so I think it probably would have to be on. Because that amount has changed of the total and and since we've gone through the contingency also.
Yeah, I mean, it it's.
You have that for tomorrow?
Oh, I'll get it right. Okay. That way that's and I I think that's about all I I've given you guys copies of the Levensburg Dam, the attorney's invoice for you guys to look over. And we have pricing from. The Palmer Group for our CCAO. Facilities pricing. Um. You guys wanna look that over? I don't suggest I would ever go for two years on that price. But that's just my opinion.
Well, especially now with. Commissioners, we had discussed. Fact that we believe that maybe rates. Could fall.
Right.
Within. You know. This new administration, so. Probably be best if we. Talked to CCAO Lutz and. See what we could do, maybe a year.
Yeah, we.
Fourteen months is what we did with the.
I I that would probably.
Fourteen months.
That way you're pretty much on everything.
Right.
And I think that's about all I have.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Tom. Lisa, I will write that up.
Okay.
No, thank you.
We'll move on. Our. Regular agenda items, uh, one to dispense reading of the minutes of the workshop stated April eight. And April ninth, a regular meeting, April ninth, two oh two five. Two to approve the bills. Three, adopt a resolution approving is submitted. That is O R C five seven zero five point four one D. February twenty five, a purchase orders to various vendors then and now. Uh, purchase orders are compliance with O R C five seven oh five point four one D. Four, pursuant to Ohio revise code section five zero. Five five seven zero five point one four to transfer monies. As submitted. To the Trumbull County Auditor's Office between dates, April three. Through April nine of twenty five.
Transfer money is approved appropriations, you don't have to feel.
No, I'm not gonna read through them, just gonna. Move through um the five. Uh, to approve additional appropriations submitted to Trumbull County Auditor Office between dates, April three through April nine. Two oh two five. The amounts are all there. We have all the backup for all those very explanations through.
Right.
So. Don't need to read those. Six, to approve transfer appropriations is submitted. April three oh five three for nine oh five is the ones that are here listed. Seven. To receive a place on file for purpose of two oh two four annual report for Gerard Miss report. Is submitted by the Honorable Judge Jeffrey D. Adler. Uh, forward a copy to the Trumbull County Auditor. This is mandated by. Uh, the Ohio revise code one nine oh. One point one four eight four. Eight, to receive a place on file for record purpose of two oh two four County Juvenile Court. Annual report. Submitted by Honorable Judge Samuel F. Ludorn. And that is mandated of Ohio revised code two one five one point one eight. Nine. To receive place on cloud two oh two four report for Newton Falls Municipal Court submitted by Honorable Phil. M. Pigarito Judge of Newton Falls Municipal Court, uh, that's mandated by revised code or Ohio revised code. One nine oh one point one four eight four. We have Gary here for the commit uh Trumbull County Engineers Department, Gary.
I thank you, Commissioner, Gary Shaper, County Engineers Office. Number ten is to concur with our office and authorize the clerk. Advertise for bids for the Barclay Messerly Bridge Replacement Project, it's our Braceville eleven bridge, Barclay Messerly or Braceville Township. Um, that's funded at a hundred percent by a bridge formula. Program granted our office received about a year, year and a half ago. So that's ready to go. I love it is to concur with the Engineers Office to grant the supplier annual. Supply. Annual supplier fleet permits as listed, opposed to concur with the Engineers Office to grant the right of way permit listed. Thirteen is to concur with the Engineers Office to grant the special hauling permits for steel coils to Jaro as listed.
That's it. So Gary, how's? What's going on with the Newton Falls? Um. The celebration over there.
Yeah, the event that's coming up in May, that's a good question, thank you. Uh, Alex did, um, she reached out to Corso, um, got the requirements uh for the county to uh move forward with that. I actually sent an email to uh Bill how I I'm proposing to. Approach this through our our permitting process, so instead of coming to, you know, up with an agreement drafting an agreement between ourselves. Um, and uh the event sponsor will go ahead and just have them apply to the permit, they'll need additional liability insurance, a liquor liability insurance. And then list the county as additional insured, of course, it sounded like they're agreeable with that.
Okay, so it looks like it's gonna.
Yeah, so we, yeah, our office, the Prosecutor's Office and Alex with H R, well, we're gonna work through this and. I'll be approaching the Commissioners, hopefully within a couple of weeks with the favorable for the permit.
Yeah, Commissioners, I'm sorry, that bridge is a little bit of a hotspot for.
Don't use the word hot.
I know, I know, so we've had, it's a historical bridge, it's it's beautiful, it's very important in this county, I think, but. I know how much it costs, unfortunately.
Yeah, it's it's sensitive and it's. It's a difficult bridge to protect over the years.
We just wanted to cover.
It's gonna highlight it and they're taking every precaution they can to make sure they preserve the bridge during that. There's gonna be security or there's just a lot of steps that they're taking. And everybody's welcome too.
Sounds really good.
Forget how much it costs, I'll probably send the Commissioners uh the invitation.
Okay.
That's how. It's coming up in May.
Uh, how's the garage, is the roof coming out of the garage in Cortland?
I think it's complete, yeah, they had a walk through last month or maybe. Even late February, it's late February, late March.
Okay, that leads to my next question. Um. You think there's room out there for us to use maybe a bay or half a bay for storage? Because it seems like we may need. Either for the sheriff's equipment. For the boats and stuff or for the new command post for uh BMA. Can you see if we could maybe use that for temporary storage?
I'll take that back, yeah, I don't know how much room we have, the different months.
Well, in the summer it should be okay.
Yeah, during the summer, yeah, it's it's a lot more room in there.
Yeah, and and I don't know, I'm just opening it up to see if you can ask the engineer.
Okay. Yeah, I'll talk to um Highway Superintendent when I get back, we'll get that conversation rolling. You said the sheriffs and EMA.
Yeah, either one, yeah, because. You know, with that new command post coming in, there's not enough room out of the fire station.
Okay, and the Commissioners had also approved earlier in the year an agreement with City of Cortland.
Right.
To store equipment there, so it's something we we typically do have some room, how much room, I don't know, depend on the equipment.
Appreciate it.
Oh, you're welcome.
You had the uh the engineer had his annual dinner. As. Per O C you're supposed to do, and there was a presentation by the one from ODOT about issue two.
It was Ohio Public Works Commission.
Okay.
Yeah, it was Linda Bayliff, uh, she's the Director, Executive Director of OPWC. And there's gonna be a ballot issue coming up in May um to um, I think it's a ten year renewal for the state capital improvement, I mean. Sanitary Engineers Office has utilized that funding on a regular basis, they're not open to the LTIP, which is the other half of the pot. Of the OPWC funding, uh, skip is available for sanitary and water lines, those type of projects where they can't go out to the LTIP, which is gas tax funding. Those are just roads and bridges, not local communities in the county, so about renewals coming up. In May, I encourage everybody to vote for that, it's no increase in taxes, no new tax. It's just a bond issue extended for another ten year period, it's actually gonna lead to an increase. Funding significantly, I think for our. Um. Area, it's gonna be a million, extra million dollars between Trumbull and Long Island.
Yeah, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, yeah, Commissioner, that bond issue they provide for OPWC. We have used uh in the past twenty years thirteen point seven six five million. In grants from that fund for these projects, so it's very important, I mean, this is. Uh, you know. From the county standpoint, very important issue if this gets passed and it's. Uh. I got twenty projects, well, twenty five projects, let's hear it. Uh, like I said, thirteen point seven million dollars in the last twenty years for them, so.
Definitely, yes, but.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely, I mean, it's it's that important if the Director came up for our dinner, she's hit a lot of the county engineers dinners. And doing a speaking, our event was, you know, it was the biggest turnout, I think she said. Had at any of the events. You know, you never take it for granted, it's always passed, uh, with a pretty good margin, but you don't take these things for granted. So a lot of townships are passing resolutions of support or I'd encourage communities to continue to do that.
Is this for mayor for November?
It's gonna be in May. If it doesn't pass, yeah, I mean, our allocation's gonna take a hit and they're not gonna formulate the uh the allocations until I believe July, which is the latest ever. Wait to see how that the the bond issue goes, we know how much money we're gonna have in the valley.
Made three words, no new taxes. This is not gonna cost anybody anything, we need to approve those monies to be bundled into, you know, into our county, so.
All right, thank you, Commissioner, for bringing that up.
Thank you, Gary. Um. Alex, do you wanna take fourteen?
Uh, Commissioners, so every year, um, oh, I'm sorry, Alex, you can just let you resources department. Uh, every year we have to renew our coverage with Corsa. Uh, it's a process where two weeks in advance, we uh publicly give the memorandum of coverage, so everybody can see that we did our due diligence. Um, as far as making sure that the insurance for this county. What we'll do today is uh on May first, we anticipate the Board of County Commissioners uh will intend to enter into our general liability insurance contract with Corsa. Which is our county risk sharing authority. Thereby entering into a joint self insured pool to provide for the payment. Of judgments, settlement of claims, expense loss and damages that may arise or is claimed to have arisen. From any act of omission of the political subdivision or any of its employees in connection with the government or proprietary, proprietary. Propriety function, excuse me, and to indemnify or hold harmless the subdivision's employees against such losses or damage. Um, so today it's very important to announce publicly that as of the date today, April sixteen, twenty twenty five. The board, well, tomorrow, excuse me, the Board of Commissioners hereby makes available to the public copies of said contract in the packages that are in front of me. Here and the clerk office will have, the clerk's office will have as well. Included in those packages are all representations made concerning potential liability to the county or its employees, as well as any potential savings or losses resulting from such contract. This will be available for two weeks, um, after that, what we'll do is in two weeks, we will bring to you the total cost of what it will cost for our next year's insurance and I can. Tell the Commissioners that it is. As anticipated, uh, it continues to rise, so. We um. We're working diligently to. Find ways to cut. Diligent.
And we self insure.
But, well, it's a joint self insurance, so it's a pool, uh, so what's interesting about Corsa is it actually just what you guys, what we entered into with the um. CCAO Energy Program. Is we all affect each other, so with the seventy eight counties, um. What is working for us may not be working for somebody else, but we're a joint pool, so we all share in the risk and. That drives up all of our costs or drives down all of our costs, whichever way you look at it, uh, it'll ebb and flow year after year, um, Trumbull County has obviously had some. Trials and tribulations, uh, and we are actually at about the peak of that right now, so you have to remember that for every every loss, there's about a two year lag in the claim. So we're about at the peak, so we're hoping that we see us come down and I can tell you right now. We're working towards it.
Okay, any questions, Commissioners? Okay. Move on to fifteen. Uh, to approve an enterprise zone agreement with Kimberly Clark Corporation, companies requesting. Tax incentive sixty percent for a ten year period to construct. A state of the art industrial production facility. Approximately one million one hundred fifty seven thousand two hundred sixty one square feet. That's a big facility that will include warehouse and office space. To be used for manufacturing of various consumer absorbent hygiene products. And partial numbers, partial numbers two eight dash nine oh three seven three eight and four three. Dash three one six eight eight eight. And that's located Pine Avenue, Howland and Warren Townships respectively. Um. Commissioners, we've had a meeting with CEOs concerning this. I believe the sixty percent is probably. I was anticipating them to come in higher, to be quite honest with you. I think it's very reasonable. Um, for this size of a facility and also for the amount of. Um. The amount of employees that are gonna. You know, be halves there, so I don't think I speak for myself. I have to think that, you know, we all will agree to that. Nick, you have a question.
Yeah, Nick Coggins, Trumbull County Planning Commission, so uh we will have a public hearing for this tomorrow morning at ten uh ten AM.
Right.
Uh, right here in the public hearing room, um, this is a proposed project by the company. Uh, they still need approval by the Board of Director, but we believe this tax evasion financing will make the financial project feasible. Uh, help them move forward with their approvals. I did wanna mention, you know, so. Trumbull County has a county enterprise zone uh that encompasses all the four townships, so we have an active enterprise zone area. Uh, so we're all full attention to these agreements based on the resolution passed in ninety four by the Commissioners. Delegated uh negotiating powers down to the townships, so Howland Township, Warren Township actually sat down with the company negotiating the sixty percent, ten years. Um, and they have both uh Howland Township approved last Wednesday, April ninth. And Warren Township approved Monday, was that yesterday, April fourteenth, uh, both have consented to approve this, so tomorrow we'll have our our public hearing. You can hear opposition, proponents for the project, um, and then this is will be on your regular scheduled meeting and be following that public hearing. For you to uh take into consideration whether to enter to the agreement for the proposed project or not.
Does Warren City have to do anything with this?
Warren City does not have to do anything with this, this building uh footprint spans Warren Township and Howland Township, it's not touching.
So all the Warren City has some property they're on, they don't really go.
Yeah, Warren City has some of the property that they own, uh, but where the building footprint lands, it is not touch inside the city of the city.
Very good.
Now, once we do this and then they expand. Then the next phase. This will include all the property there then?
No.
Or do you have to come back and do it again and again and again?
You would have to come back and do it again and again and again, so this this agreement will specifically end will be for this one point one million square foot proposed facility. Um, and the jobs created to work inside that facility. If they move on to a second phase and do an expansion, they would like another abatement, they will have to come for a second agreement. Uh, or a third agreement, fourth agreement, so on, however many that they go through, but that this will only cover specifically this building footprint and the jobs created. Uh, as specified in this agreement, if they wanted anything more, phase two or phase three, they would have to come back to the table. Again, negotiate townships where that building footprint lay, um, and then come to the Commissioners for final.
We learned yesterday about seventy five percent of the building would be in Howland, twenty five percent roughly would be in Warren Township.
For phase one.
For phase one. It's a great thing, this is what. Tax evasions are made for, create jobs and it's over four hundred ninety initial jobs or something, I just thought of this. I mean, so let's. Just a no brainer to me.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Thank you, Nick.
One other thing on that note, um. That seventeen million debt, um. Ohio's Act of the Month, right, that we got last last week.
Yes.
Uh, I think we need to send a letter, um. Thanking uh Nick Santucci, he was very instrumental in in for us getting that money. And he, without his efforts. I don't think we will die, so. I would like to have just send a letter out of regulations, maybe again for, turn to you again. Um, helping secure that seventeen million, which is a huge part of this project.
Right. Agree with that.
Let's have um. Uh, Lisa, can you contact Anthony Trevino at the Port Authority, help him write in on behalf of us in the Port Authority. Do a joint letter with them, to the ones that wrote up what they needed and and educated Nick on that.
Yeah, I just say.
Okay, uh, we'll move on to next agenda items, sanitary, Gary?
Oh. Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer. Yeah, Commissioners, item sixteen, in an effort to uh shore up our uh water districts and. Uh, the financial difficulties we're having there. Uh, we're currently losing money on our water permits. Uh, you know, the tosses of meters have gone up, us installing meter pits have gone up. And this will not affect anyone who's already a current customer at all, uh, this will be more connections coming in. That we need to increase our permit fees. Accordingly, so we can recover our costs.
Gary, is this for new construction or is this for the sale of an existing home, a new homeowner?
For someone that wants to become a water customer, whether or not the structure is already there or not. Somebody must want to have a customer. Um, look at that cover, be, look at the third page, this is a. Third page shows the current. Possible water permit. And let's just start with that easiest one there, three quarter inch tap, no uh meter pit. It used to be four hundred twenty nine dollars to recover our costs, we need to make that four seventy five. When it comes to if somebody needs a meter pit. That needs to go from thirty seven hundred to forty nine fifty, so every time we go out and make a connection with a meter pit, we're losing that much right now. We need to shore that up, um. And when we get to the larger meters.
There, meter pit, it's. What do you? I I'm not sure I understand.
All right, let me, let me, let me just draw the chart for you.
Okay, yeah, I mean.
Let me do that. This will be a house that does not need a meter pit, that's the very first one here, this is your standard residential permit. We wanna take that from four point.
Oh, nice.
We want to take that from four point to four seventy-five. And what's involved there is the homeowner goes and installs the live curb box into the house. And then they leave, we give them details on, I don't believe a space for us, our guy to come in and install a meter. Because that's all part of the permit. They, they leave a, uh, a jumper in between. Where this meter, meter supposed to go, our guy goes in, uh, jumper, meter. That's the simplest one on there, the residential three-quarter by five-inch. Now, if they live more than two hundred feet off the road, or if they can't keep that meter in a heated environment. Then they need a meter pit. Okay, so meter pit costs more, costs us more. You have to call Lee out there to install this meter pit, put, put that meter pit out. And the cost for that for a residential house in the past, well, currently it's thirty-seven hundred. We need to take that up to three hundred and fifty, just to cover our costs. Yes. Uh, and then as you go through the larger meters, uh, there's some houses that are much larger. They'd rather have a one-inch meter. Um, there's some businesses that need a one-inch meter, but you can just look through here, um. At the different meter sizes that where we need to increase. In order to cover what it's costing them.
Well, you definitely, you're not in the market to lose money.
And also, uh, yeah, like I said, this will not affect any existing customers, just new customers coming online. Those projects where we already had the public hearing, State Road Water Realization. Um, Steel Wagon Hill Road, we already told them what their tax, their permit fees were going to be at that public hearing. I would like to just hold that and give them a grace period to get in. Let them know, hey, we'll hold to the permit fees that we had at the public hearing until December thirty-first. Connect after that, the new permit fees will come into, and I'll get letters out to them that afternoon.
So we haven't had a rate increase in this since two thousand and eight, correct?
Uh, no, this is in twenty-two, we had this just.
Twenty-two, okay, I saw something in twenty, okay. Here's my thoughts, guys. Um, first of all, this wasn't brought up when we were, we've been talking about. Water rate increases for three months. I question why this wasn't brought up when we were debating. The regular water rates. I know it's a separate issue, but I thought that that should have been brought up. And my thoughts are, since we have that advisory panel's going to be named, why don't we hold off? I know we've been losing money, but we've been losing money since two thousand and twenty-two. Let the advisory panel go in there and look at all of this and see what their recommendations are back to us. I mean, why rush it now? Advisory panel's going to be named within a week or so. Uh, we've already got some names in, we'll name a chairman, and this could be one of the first issues. I mean, I, I just don't understand why this is brought up to us now. Why wasn't it brought up to us when the other rate increases were suggested?
Okay, man, like you said, it's a separate issue.
I, it's a separate issue, but it's still, it still needed to be raised and it. And you had three months, I mean, we've been debating issues rates for three months and now, two weeks after we. Initially raised the rates, now we get hit with another one. And my question is, what's behind this one?
And it's just our increased cost.
I, I don't understand that, but it's been, you know, we've been needing it for a long time. So I just say we wait for the advisory panel to what they come up with.
This won't affect any existing customer.
That's fair.
But we are losing money on the existing. Cause, or no, well, we've already, this is all new, all new.
Water permit.
Right.
Yeah, it's causing, they're only paying four seventy-five when it's, well, they're only paying four twenty-nine, it's costing us four seventy-five. But so the people who come in for the large meters, that's where we're really losing. Uh, if you look at that, like a two-inch radio meter. They're paying seventy-four hundred and two dollars for this, costing us eleven and a half thousand, really almost four thousand bucks on some enterprise. Then it needs a two-inch meter.
Who would need something like that? Just as an example.
How often?
Uh.
Uh, very often.
Commercial lot, most of it, two-inch meters.
I would say somebody like the, the mine or out there, they got a, they have a. It's, it's customers like that.
It's a big commercial new construction.
Right, we are losing money when they do come in. And I'd say we might get a half dozen of those.
Oh, I, I absolutely, the people we've already dealt with have to be grandfathered. Even if this new advisory board does whatever they do, all those people still have to be protected and grandfathered that. And I think if you do something like this, you gotta set the date of when it starts to give people a chance that are maybe in the bubble of doing it. We don't want to stick that to that, we gotta give them at least, you know. Ninety days or more noticed it on this date, it's going to go into effect. So if they want to do it beforehand, if they're, if they're ready to do it. But I, I do agree, someone else, you have more eyeballs on it, if it doesn't. If we're gonna set a timeframe of when this is gonna go into effect, we can adjust that as this board meets. Something we said now.
And this rate is stood for how long?
It, it stays in effect until.
I mean. I mean, but. Do you guys have a, a date where you think it may have to be raised again?
No, we, we don't have that yet, Commissioner.
Every, it's done every couple, whenever our prices go up, we notice it. Whenever, it's not, you know, if the rate increases a little bit over the next six months, we don't check it out. We would wait two or three.
We anticipate anybody soon on the radar that is going to be needing these two, these big meters.
I, I have to research that, look into it, I know.
So I mean, we don't have anybody we can.
Yeah, but they're not gonna need it right away, are they?
Well, well, yeah, that's the thing that's in the process already. We know they're already there. Be like, oh, you're building here, we're gonna junk check your prices out. That would be one we'd have to exempt also. I would say we have to.
Right. I'd agree with that. So with the exception of Amazon.
So I guess we wouldn't know because if they're already in the plans and we know about them, I'd probably exempt them because they're already in, in the talks of getting it. We're not gonna, we're not gonna gouge something on someone when they've already anticipated their development here, anticipated movement here. It, it's gotta be a set date when it, it starts fresh with a new idea. I don't think it'd be fair to.
Uh, Julie, from the planning commission standpoint, we, we learned about these things mostly from you. They come over with your site plan. They get sent to Chuck Miller. Uh, what other ones are, are?
We haven't had any, uh, I mean, commercial typically doesn't go through us unless there's subiding them. But Nick would have to talk about the upcoming economic development projects, which are all coded, so. I'm not sure if we can talk about that in a public meeting, probably not.
All right, okay.
So with this, all this in mind, the fact that we don't have a date, or the commissioner proposing to table this agenda item?
I am. I'm saying this, this, let the advisory panel get into.
I have no problem. We got an advisory panel putting there, this could be something they can look at first, just.
Yeah, well, I trust we need it.
All right, then instead of table, let's just prop the agenda.
Yeah, then we gotta wait. Let's, that's all we do, Gary, and then this will be the first thing we can have, then we can test them with. With looking at, and looking at the figures and give them something to do.
Thinking these advisory panels will be together in like two weeks, couple weeks?
Well, we're starting to get names in now and then, and then the advisory chairman. Oh, there, unless you want to do that today, tomorrow?
I don't think we have enough yet. You know, we set a deadline for, I've only seen one.
Okay. You know, uh. Definitely not into losing money, so, okay, if it needs to be done, it needs to be done. We'll, we'll let the advisory panel look at it, and if they find something different, then that's fine, but, you know.
And, and I'm glad, I'm glad you are looking at this stuff. This is stuff that. We're getting ahead of now, it was done three years ago, now we're doing it again, we're evaluating. We're looking at our costs to keep up with the times. That's something we told you, we want it done, whether it be. Rate increases passed on to us from the distributor or parts. You know, this looks like here, a lot of this stuff is in parts, and when I see it, there is some in installation or restoration that have gone up. You know, those, those are ones I'd, I'd be questioning more than the, the cost of the part, but we have to. Yeah, that's the right direction of what I would like to see this, this go, with all departments.
Are these rates based on us just breaking even or making money?
Breaking even.
Okay, um, thank you, Gary, for your diligence, letting us know about this. I mean, we do need to know this. Um, are you on seventeen?
Uh, yeah, I'm seventeen and eighteen, or also hours, um. Item seventeen, this is to adjust our. Fire line rates. Bob, you want to explain this one, give, give a little more time to this.
Uh, Commissioner Claude Meyerano, controllers and data engineers, um, when we. Were working in our utility building system, we came across a hundred and seventeen accounts that have what is called a fire. So basically a fire line is anywhere from a two-inch to an eight-inch, uh. Fire fighting water line that customers have. Like I said, we only have a hundred and seventeen out of our overall. Um, the question was asked what to do with those rates. We didn't include them in the great proposal to the board, which it's never been done that way in the past, going forward, maybe it will be. Um, though this was tripled effect in nineteen ninety-nine, it was adjusted in two thousand. It hasn't been adjusted since. Um, the city of Warren currently charges a hundred and forty-two dollars a month. To all their outside customers and they charge ninety-four dollars a month for their inside customers. So we stayed with a graduated, um. I guess, pricing structure to where if you have an eight-inch or larger fire line, we would charge a hundred dollars. And then basically for each meter size going down twenty-five percent, we reduce the price by twenty-five percent. So this would affect a hundred and seventeen existing. Basically, it's no residential, it's all commercial or industrial profits.
All right, uh, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer. Commissioners, just to describe the way a fire line works also, you have your domestic, your domestic water goes through a meter and goes into a. That fire line is not on a meter. They, they need a, and so usually there's nothing, there's no water being used through this fire line. But if there is a fire and a sprinklers go off, they, we have no way of metering that. So this is basically a flat fee you pay to have that water available if there's a fire. And they may use, you know, hundreds of thousands of gallons in one event, but. But when it's not metered, then we lose the money on that. So this is our way of, of, uh. Preventing taking a big loss if there's a fire and we lose a million gallons of water, let's say.
This is a monthly charge?
Yeah, it's a monthly charge.
Monthly.
And it's just for them to be able to, if they have any fire, there's sprinklers. Yeah, commercial or industrial, and it's, these are modest increases around.
I, I don't see any interest with that.
I, I just think any rate increase, why not let the advisory board look at it? This is definitely one that's been out there since two thousand. Just let them look at all of them. Seventeen and eighteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. Maybe they'll come back and think it needs to be higher. You know, in eighteen, you've got, uh, the hydrant meter going from fifty to two hundred and fifty dollars. That's a huge increase.
Uh, boss, you want to talk about it?
You can move on to eighteen, we'll, we'll look at all these together.
So for item number eighteen, um, we, through our engineering department. I want to say for a fee of fifty dollars right now, we either give a resident a pool meter or a business a hydrant meter. Um, the pool meter, if someone's filling the swimming pool, it basically deducts their, um, sewer. So a pool meter costs us about three hundred dollars and it saves our residents. So we have no change in that. We need to turn over a meter six or seven times to pay for itself. The hydrant meters, on the other hand, um, this one. We have, this has never been in front of the board to my knowledge. I had the administrative office look. Through to see if there was an agenda item, and what we've been doing is, if your pool meter was fifty dollars, we charged fifty dollars for a hydrant. Um, as you can see, the hydrant meter we use with the backflow costs over thirty-five hundred dollars. So what we're doing is we are renting out, I say renting, but. We are charging out hydrant meters at fifty bucks a time and we do them maybe thirty times a year. So this is for paving contractors, occasionally the truck that you see driving around with water. Those go on our hydrants and they would be using this meter to fill their trucks, um. All commercial applications. This is not anything that a homeowner would get. So. We actually were throwing around a five hundred dollar rental, which would put it in the same amount. In terms of a pool meter to a resident, a hydrant meter to a business. Because it would take about seven rentals to recoup our costs. We felt going from fifty to five hundred was a bit much, so we figured two fifty. So, I mean, if we choose to wait for the advisory committee for the, um, sixteen and seventeen, you know, that's, that's fine with us. I would ask that for the hydrant meters, because it, it's fifty dollars is, we don't recoup it in two years. What we have in the height. And it's never been addressed before. Like I said, this has never been in front of the commissioners before, so. We just keep charging fifty dollars and then our current hydrant meter rate is ten dollars, which would be below what we're charging residents.
What's the city of Warren? If you go out to Elm Road and they get a load up or where they chose.
So that's a, a filling station, and I don't know how a filling station works. Um, we don't have filling stations. This would be our equivalent, like they pull a truck in under that station and fill it right up. So I'm guessing it's probably fairly cheap because they're just, they own the water and they, it's not, we're not giving you. A piece of equipment to fill that up. So we have people that use this all summer contractors for fifty dollars.
And, and Commissioner Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, a lot of the. Contractors who use the hydrant meters are, you know, heavy hitters out there, like Mike Chozy's got one rented out on. Out there, you know, this is charged around all of them, two fifty for a multimillion dollar project.
What do we, what do we, or how do we charge all these car washes that are bought up or mod washers and all these? Some type of a commercial meter that they're using, you know, using any special?
Uh, well, they're, they're probably have the two-inch meters also, or maybe even a three-inch.
But this is, this is specifically to get on fire.
This area.
So it would be, you're doing a paving project and you just go find a fire, hook it up to the hydrant water flow store and you get the reading off of that. When they return, we charge, we charge them for taking the unit, we charge them for the water.
And when they come back, we, we say, oh, you just, many gallons, once you design your meter, you know, it's this much. Add ten bucks per thousand and we want to make that fifteen per thousand, the hydrant rate is actually less than. But as Commissioner Bernard mentioned, uh, we wanted to just leave all this up to the advisory committee also.
That's a neat one. They can do that in a day. That could be the first day, they can approve that, tell them to us and say, hey, in our first meeting. Prove this and, or prove all of them at the first meeting if they want.
The, the good part about it is that we know where we're at with it. If we didn't know about it, then we would never have been brought to it, or attention.
Then we wouldn't be back to the same boat. If we don't go through the advisory committee, then we're enough trustees, getting complaints from their residents, calling them. They're gonna be against it because they don't understand it. At least we have the advisory committee, they understand it. They can sell it to their residents and handle a lot of the calls that we would get by them understanding, being on board with it, being part of the process. And of course, we don't have to take the advisory.
And of course, we don't have to take the advisory's advice of if they say not, I'll raise it. We don't want you to and we need to. That's different, but, but I'm, I'm sure they're going to be on board.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Bob.
Um, Commissioner, we're just going to pull sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. And Gary, just start preparing right now for the very first advisory meeting, which will be within a month. And have that ready to go. That'll be the first things on the agenda.
If there's anything else, bring, bring that all out too. Bring out everything that we need to know. You know, wh- what you're finding.
Especially if they're only going to meet twice a year. That, that needs to go.
They may need more than half.
They may, but I think we mandated in our thing that they would meet.
I visualize them needing a lot more than twice a year.
Okay, we're going to move on to nineteen. Uh, receive and place on file a monthly activity report for Kama County Dog Kennel. Uh, by Michelle Goss. For the month of March, like twenty-five. Here's an, here's a neat one, Mark.
Yeah.
This, this is something that'll put a smile on their face. You want to just mention about what they're doing and what it is?
Sure. So the, uh, uh, name first, Mark Manning. And Chief Financial Officer. Sure. Uh, this is approved, uh, the family farm and home. To provide us with the dog food if, um, they offer to, uh. Help our canines out with training as well. Uh, we had a big Easter event over here on Saturday and we had. One of our experienced dogs, Lincoln, and another one of our dogs being trained that has about another month or so. Going fantastic. But this is great, a family farm and home that they're, they're, they're going to provide us with dog food. You know, because these dogs stay with the officer, you know what I'm saying? So it's like. That they got, it's like adopting another child, you know? These dogs got to be, you know, you have these kind of dogs, they got to be worked on and stuff, you know, they're, they're exhausted, just don't go home. Have a dog bed at bed, it's got to work, I'm sitting in the car all day, you know, let's chase.
Right, and we know the cost of dog food.
Yeah, exactly. This is, this is a great, yeah. And we want to thank the family farm and home for doing something like that.
How did this become, uh, possible? Did Sheriff's Department reach out to them or?
Yeah, David Ragero had talked to, someone had contacted and David Ragero, Captain, had picked it up and, um. Followed up on it. They agreed to do that.
We had the commissioners commend the sheriff for that Easter egg, but that was nine.
Yeah, it turned out really well. A lot of people showed up, um. I actually never thought the first time, I mean, we didn't begin next year. But Walmart came out with their manager and employees and helped out. A lot of help in the community. A lot of people showed up, so.
It's great.
Yeah, I was in attendance and it was very well received, even though the weather was cool. I mean. I was, I was presently surprised how many people.
I mean, we had thousands and thousands, the whole courtyard filled with things, thousands, thousands.
Like four thousand eight.
Yeah, we were, we were going to get enough and we were going to have to pick them all up, but man, it wasn't even five minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wiped them out. It was good.
Yeah, and one we're added to, Commissioners, we're from a county fairgrounds had their Easter egg. And that was a, a big success too, so. Hats off to the fairgrounds and the board and everyone out there for their Easter egg hunt. Um, thank you, Mark. Okay, that.
Sarah Taylor, Commissioners. I forgot one very important item. Um, I got an email from Family Court. During our budget hearings, they asked for a new server for their building. Their server is fourteen years old. It's going up like daily. It's already gone up five hundred eighty dollars. So they're asking where we are with this.
It's a costume?
It's twenty thousand dollars.
Who's budget?
Well, we would have to, we would have to.
Do they have, they don't have money in there?
No, they do not.
First time Gary's invited.
They did ask for it in the budget. That's, I, it was a capital improvement. Their, but their server is like quite old, like fourteen years old is significantly old and. Tech wise, you know, so twenty thousand five sixty-four fourteen.
It's going up. Can we take that out of that capital improvement that you talked about earlier?
The four oh three, sure can.
Sure, does that have to go through? Down a processing board?
I, they got it closed, so it should, it should happen. I think it still has to, we'll go have to go for the final approval. So we would have to approve it. We do have it in the four oh three account. Could cover it that way. It's up to you guys.
I just want to make sure we follow the procedure, but that processing board has to approve it inside of us.
Through them no matter what, but I, I, you know, I don't want to, it was fuzzy, but it was back to remember. Yeah. Sworn, they said that.
And they have their own IT down there that works in conjunction with ice. So they would have to make sure, yeah.
Because they'll make sure that we get the best, the bad processing, which job is to make sure that we get the best.
Yeah.
Cost and what's best for this county, so.
We could always have that found out, it's on an agenda for.
We can do that.
But we'd have to do it if it keeps, you said it went up how much?
It, it's already gone up five hundred eighty dollars.
But then?
Yeah, just in the last few months, you know, it's just.
Can you find out by tomorrow?
I can find out, find out right now and see what, see what happens.
Yeah, that's, that's okay. Add it to it, right?
Okay, then I will put on it.
We'll go next.
Yeah, we, we know, we, we know the fund, so I mean, at least that's covered, but it is quite old. They have been. Really conservative with cameras and everything else down there, so. I think you catch it. Okay.
As long as it goes through the proper process. Guys, Commissioners. One thing I had, um, senior levy had asked that we talk to the sheriff about the. Uh. Grass cutting snow removal program. The past sheriff had a program with them, uh, where they had. Um. Individuals, the sheriff's department would oversee, uh, mowing grass for the senior citizens in the county. Uh, that went through Dawn Hyde and, uh. They had asked, we talked to Sheriff Wilson to see if we can continue that program. Um. They have about a hundred and twenty-five lawns on the list. And I remember last year and the year before, by May, there were some that hadn't been mowed at all yet. And so we want to see if we can, uh, work with the sheriff that.
Inmates still?
Yeah, I believe they have the trustee inmates or wherever they go and do it and they, uh. They sent a sheriff out, you know, approved out to do that and then they hit all the senior lawns under supervision. Um, they, they did it last year, but it got started late and they were backed up because it was three months. Of no grass getting cut and seniors calling like crazy. So they just want to get ahead of it this year and Diana asked that we see if we can implement something with the new sheriffs to continue that program. And get on schedule so that they don't get backed up this year.
Mark?
Yeah, so that would go through David Bobby, Major David Bobby. We've been talking about that. Uh, I think it's, as long as we have the personnel to be able to oversee that. Um, we'll be able to do it, but I, I'll, I'll have a conversation with David Bobby and get back to you on it. Exactly where it stands.
Do we have the mowers and everything to do that then? Anybody know?
I do not know. We have a mower. I don't, uh, probably some, I'm sure they did it before.
The sheriffs had their own individual, I'm assuming it's inmates that was cutting the grass, right? Yeah, I don't know who served it. I mean, who has their equipment?
Since here's a day that worked with, uh.
Gil Watkins. Commissioner. Mitch, Mitch Fertz used the program as well.
Used the program also?
Actually, yes.
You have to say your name.
Uh, Zachary's the executive director of Chonghan Mitch Fertz. Uh, Mitch Fertz, along with the, uh, senior folks, used that program last year. That was Gil Watkins through the sheriff's office and. I, yeah, they did have their own maintenance over at the. Uh, kind of garage there around here. There was a couple of mowers and gear backers and a lot of folks.
It says they've worked with, they've worked with comfort keepers. Um, through the senior levy, someone named Joe Hoytek. And they assisted comfort keepers, so maybe they had the lawn mowers. I don't, we'll look into it. Get with the sheriff and see if we can keep that going and not get ahead of it this year.
I can tell you this, brass needs cut, so it's, I mean. You're going to do it, you're going to get on.
How do we get the names for the seniors they need though?
They have, the senior levy has all of their customers and. Um, they put them on a list and they get to them as fast as they can, but there's a hundred and twenty-five on the list already. And then they were going to require a couple of crews to get out there and get it done.
Is that county wide or that includes the cities also or just the county? Does anybody know?
Uh, whoever our senior levy services, uh, services.
Okay. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Elder's really depend on it, especially in.
Um, one last thing we need to figure out today. Is, uh, we had the Valley Vision meeting yesterday. Um, and they were talking already about the Washington D.C. Twenty-fifth to the twenty-seventh of June this year. Um, last year was real successful. They had, um, eighty people or so from the contingency, but with. Congressman this year, Senator Marino's hosting, um. The people, they've got some things with some other congressmen lined up, Mike Kelly in Pennsylvania, on some programs and we have. The list of the, the priorities we have. Um, that were submitted in the portal to Senator Marino and Dave Joyce. That's where you go down there and kind of hobnob with them and. Push for your programs. Um, wanting to see if we're going to send that commissioner again this year, we would. And, uh, but we need to make the reservations to get that going if we're going to do that.
First of all, I think we should do it, um. For a couple of reasons, but the main reason, we actually have some projects that are down there that, that we've lobbied for. And, um, I think that Commissioner, you should be the one to go, uh, you went last year. Um. You know, the ins and outs, you, you know where to go to, you know the people and you'd be willing to go. I, I, I see no problem sending you down there.
Either you want to go or is that something you?
Well, first of all, I agree with Commissioner Bernard. You, you know the delegation there, you've been there, we're. I mean.
Oh, if you want me to go, I'll go. And I'll, I'll accept that. Like, we did make good progress last year. We had the Hydrilla. That we were able to bring up and it was, uh, heavily talked about in every meeting we had. And as well as Kimberly Clark program and some of the other ones. So that's something that. It's worth it. It's, it's a, it's a worthy expense to go down there to do that with the money that we bring back. We saw a return on it last year.
Very funny first class. You did have a commissioner for five or two.
I still look back.
You don't need to hurt that ring.
We're going to cheap. As cheap as I possibly can.
And, and you have the dates?
Yeah, the twenty-fifth, the twenty-seventh, the twenty-fourth, return on the twenty-seventh. Uh, the twenty-fourth and return on the twenty-seventh.
We do have ladies here that have been waiting with the presentation out.
You said two minutes, yeah?
Okay, give me here, give the name and.
Jen Jones, Georgia trouble solid waste sister. Um, as you guys know, you've been on the board for a long time. We're at the point now where every five to six years, we have to rewrite as per Ohio revise code, we have to write our plan. It's three hundred pages, um, and it has to go through a ratification process where every community. Township, village, city and county has to re-review the plan and formally vote to either approve or not approve it. So this is your official delivery of the plan. It's on a dump drive this year. I'm not delivering five hundred pages.
We're going to see you like at three o'clock.
I know, but I wanted to officially deliver it, so you'll see me a little bit. And here's just some information about the district, where we spend our money, how we spend our money, all the different programs. Um, I will say the reason I'm asking for two minutes is because we, we are asking to raise our fees. Uh, but I know that's a dirty word right now, uh, but your fees do not come out of our county funds. Um, the, we, we don't take any of your money, everything. We have our own funding source through landfills. Landfills give us our money. Um, so we're actually just asking to raise the fees at the landfill level. Um, it's two dollars per ton, which an average person produces one ton of trash per year. Um, so that will be the average person would see a two dollar increase for the entire year if the landfill passes on the entire two dollars. To each individual, it will go through your hauler and then wherever you, wherever you pay to pick up your trash, that's where the money will go up. Um, if they choose to pass that on, getting rid of a TV costs twenty-five to fifty, even a hundred dollars if you have a really big one. We take it free of charge. One TV will pay for twenty years of our service. So just saying, we, we are good bang for our buck. Um, it's two dollars. So if you have any questions, I have tons of papers. I will definitely come back and discuss it when you put it on as a resolution. You have ninety days. For Ohio revise code, ninety days from the date of delivery to pass either yes or no. If you do nothing, it's an automatic no. So I please ask that you write something to approve it, um, so that we can move forward. We need a sixty percent approval level and each county has to approve it. That's all. Thank you. Here's some info. Yes.
Quick question for you, for you.
Yes.
I got this call this morning, uh, from a constituent. They wanted to know. Why we don't have recycling bins when the trash gets picked up in trouble county?
Why, why don't we have curbside?
Curbside. They said that in some other communities, they, they're given a separate trash can and they're given a separate bin. Why we don't have contracts with the private companies to have recycling in trouble county that way?
Because, all right, so. Trash is all, trash and recycling go to two completely different places. So if you have a trash company. That comes and picks up your trash, they would have to have a separate truck, come and pick up those materials and take them to a recycling facility. Which the closest ones are, um, in, in Cuyahoga County, there's one down in Senate, um. In Twinsburg. Start. Uh, there's none that are especially close. There is one in a transfer station in Poland. Uh, the problem is, is that we have all of our trash is private. It's ninety percent of the, our residents have private trash. You buy a house, you can choose waste management or sunburst or whoever. Warren is different. They have their own system. That's a whole different story. Um, I could discuss why that doesn't work in Warren, but. For a company that if they're only picking up you and maybe one other house in your block or three, three block area, it's really. Financially inefficient for them to pick up recycling too. It would be very expensive. So you'd pay twenty dollars for trash. And you would pay an additional twenty dollars for recycling. Because there's only, out of the five people who have that trash service in that neighborhood, maybe only one or two of you decide to recycle. So they're sending out a truck with a driver and all the gas and everything to come and pick up your recycling, to drive it all the way to Twinsburg, you know, it, it. It's just not efficient. The best way to be able to have curbside recycling, which is where I, definitely where I want to go. That's where we need to go as an industry with recycling is to bid it out as a county. Or as a township or as a village or as a city and make everybody who's within that area has to sign up for recycling. Then the, the cost overall is smaller per person because everybody's on the same plan. And it's less wear and tear on the roads for trash. It's less wear and tear, you know, for damage made done by trucks. It's, there's a whole lot of benefits to it. Which I, I won't go into now because I know you have other things to do, but the short-term version is it's way too expensive. Um, I would love to be able to offer, I know Mahone County has it. Because they have a contract, they have a landfill there called Carbon Limestone Landfill, where public services. As part of one of their agreements to expand the landfill, there's always these concessions in these, uh, negotiations. Uh, and in one of those negotiations to expand their landfill, Carbon Limestone offers free recycling to everybody in the county. We don't have that benefit. We don't have any landfills. We don't have any host agreements. We don't have any. Negotiation power to get that free of charge. It's just something Carbon has always offered for decades for Mahone County. We don't have that here and it's, that's very unusual. Almost nobody does. In Cuyahoga County. In Cuyahoga County, they're all cities, so they all have curbside because each city individually bids it out. And does trash and recycling bundled together. That's the cheapest and most efficient way to get it bundled together. Yes.
Julie Green, just a quick question. Are there any other counties in Ohio that have managed to convince everybody to sign up?
Not, not that I'm aware of the entire county, but large chunks. I am actually working on trying to get. Consult, it's called a trash consortium where we get five, six, seven townships together. To form a consortium and bid out trash and recycling in a block, in a lot, block. Because then you get, um, scale, you get.
Right.
Economy of scale, yes. So, you know, Gus Davis, who only has seven hundred people, they're not going to get a really good rate. But if you get Gus Davis and Green and Johnson and Kinsman and Mecca, all of them together, then it's going to be a much better rate. But everybody within that area would have to, all the residents would have to agree to use sunburst or. Waste management or whoever that one company is that wins the bid, which there's some pushing. Push and pull there and, and it's a little bit of education. It's, it's a better service all around, but it's hard sometimes to convince residents that it's a better service. But that's something, if we can tackle it by chunks versus bidding out the entire county. Uh, I think we could get there with them. That's actually in our plan. Uh, I think we could get there with them, that's actually in our plan, and in the next, in the next ten years, we wanna be there.
Julie Green, we're working on the Mecca Township Conference of Plan, so we'll definitely incorporate that as a point of uh discussion during our public.
Yeah, but in our plan, we're working on putting together like a marketing packet, this is why you should do this, and then going to each of the communities and trying to sell it, that's great, okay?
There was a, well, for this constituent, Mercedes, they live in Vizzetta, they said they used to have one in Vizzetta Administration parking lot.
A drop-off, yes.
Drop-off, the the trustees got rid of it, they wanted to know. What they can do, is there, uh, do we have a resource where they can go online and see where the closest one is that they can go to?
It's on our website, um, so there's. There's four in that general area, Mecca, um, and a Fowler, I'm I'm not sure, it depends on where they are in Vizzetta. There might be some on eastern, western side, no, no, there's nothing in Vizzetta, they had their own site and they closed it about seven years ago. Um, so the would have, they would have to go to a neighboring community, but most of them are about ten minutes, ten minutes drive. There's a a bunch all the way around, TCTC is kind of southeast, um, there's Enchampion, so those are all. Locations that might be within reasonable driving distance depending on where they are in Vizzetta. But no, they don't have it in Vizzetta right now, sadly.
Okay.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Okay, we need to move, um. We have Kirsten Olley here from KO Consulting, we're, we apologize for the delay, but.
Oh, my pleasure.
Sometimes we get a.
It's good that you see what we're going through though, also to get a feel of.
Oh, that it brought me flashbacks, so um. Just go, my name is uh Kirsten Olley, I am the CEO of KO Consulting. We are a community and economic development firm. Um, what that means is we do grants, development, research, uh, grant writing, compliance, the whole nine. Um, I was, in my previous life, I was with the Mahoning County for a decade. So this really just was a flashback to sitting through lots of work sessions in Mahoning County, I worked for the sanitary engineering department then. Um, obviously handled, understand how county government works, I handled, you know, USDA, EPA. OPWC that you spoke of earlier, anything that you could think of was sort of what, you know, I handled as my my bailiwick there in the sanitary engineering. Um, in twenty twenty, I left the county because northeast Ohio leaves approximately five hundred million on the table annually. In grant funds that they just don't pursue. Um, I knew we have a tremendous engineering firms here, architect firms here, there's really no such thing as a competitive, that in terms of a grant firm. The way that I structured the company, I have ten staff, two of which, well, actually, four of which are Trumbull County residents, so we are all local, so. You're gonna get a, you know, a local flair to your service, I know my counterpart Josh Press came out and spoke a few weeks ago. He handles all the government relations for any client that we sign on the portfolio. Uh, we have a nonprofit division, a um for-profit division, and then the government division, which is municipalities, school districts, um. No county government is in the is in the portfolio to date, um, but we would be very interested in having a county portfolio. Grants are a volumes game, the more you're applying for, the more money's gonna come back. Oh, how I built the firm was if the county commission, Mahoning County Commissioners, my former bosses, had asked me, how would you build a grant firm? I built the firm in a way that we are here to assist your departments on what they're already successful with, I don't have to tell. Your engineers or sanitary about OPWC or EPA or Appalachian Regional Commission, they know that money, they get that money, they're very good at it. What I look at our firm is our uh KO, we're in your corner, we look at our firm as an add-on, how can we help you get more dollars? How can we help you go after dollars you're not already applying for, just because you don't have the capacity? When I was at the county, I I probably could have used two or three more hands any given day. So what you have with our firm is ten additional grant writers that are helping your departments pursue dollars that they just physically do not have the time to get to. With that, I recommend, you know, very similarly, we do a lot of strategic planning. One of the things we don't do in the grant world is grant planning. So one of the tools we have in the toolkit, I created a funding readiness assessment and grant strategy calendar. Which we go in, we sit down with any client, we say, give me your top five priority projects, are these residual projects, are these new projects? How do you know that you've exhausted all the funding for those projects without doing the research? So one of the things we have built is proprietary software that pulls not only federal and state opportunities, but all corporate. And foundation opportunities, local, national, and state, that oftentimes municipalities don't realize they could go after. Those found national foundation and those corporate dollars, because you're a governmental entity, you're still eligible for some of those dollars. Specifically when we're talking about a dog program with cops, or maybe some park districts need more equipment. And again, we're not here to do, we don't work with anybody and any one of our clients and go after what you're already receiving. You have experts on within every department that know how to do that. Our goal is how do we help you get more, or how do we go after funds you're not currently getting? And that's often where we see the our our propensity for success, which brings me to, you talked a lot about bottom line, we have a hundred percent ROI. I don't have a client in the portfolio that we're doing grant writing for that doesn't get back tenfold what our contract is. I, we are very specific, we are very strategic, I also have the leverage of telling you, no, we're not gonna go after that. Why? Because you're just not gonna get it, so as an independent consultant, I could say, we're gonna be very choosy as to what we go after. Which is also what's made us so successful, um, just to streamline the process, I have a. Planning and zoning professional on staff who can assist with any of those needs, which is often needed and sometimes that expertise is needed on. Within projects, he came from New York, he worked on many um super fund sites and zoning projects in the city of New York, so that's. Gives us a really interesting perspective for us to be able to offer that additional service. Um, everything is sliding scale, every contract is built unique based on what the client needs, um. From some clients, we handle all their grant writing, every single thing they do from start to finish, some were just doing review. Some were doing compliance, some were doing research, so um that is pretty much a very one-thousand-foot overview of what we do. I would yield, did I miss anything very critical?
No.
And I have a fantastic diverse team that's uh very diverse in age, diverse in experience, which brings us a nice perspective. In terms of how to go after funds and how to be strategic. I'm at a point now where I just get to come and do presentations and my my staff is, you know, back at the office cranking grants out. We probably are at a point now where we're submitting. Maybe two hundred grants a month, three hundred grants a month, and we just have the cap, I just have the staff and the team. That gives us the capability to crank that volume out, I couldn't do that on my own, you only have eight hours in a day, forty hours in a week. We just have built a very turnkey process that has allowed us to be successful. We're in five states, most of our clients are right here at home in northeast Ohio, Mahoning and Trumbull County, we work with a lot of your. Nonprofit organizations in both uh both counties, when you spoke earlier about we're doing a lot of art board reporting on behalf of some clients that got money from. Mahoning County Commissioners, so we're very familiar with that process, um. We're just uh very, very strategic in how we've gone about things, we're in California, Texas, uh, Wisconsin, Pennsylvania, in addition to Ohio. I'm looking to bring on three more staff so we can continue to meet the demand, and I'd I'd yield to any questions that you you may have, um. Have to answer them.
I think uh, did you not, I I just attended, well, Jen was just here, I think you picked up Geoga.
Yes.
Trumbull Waste District.
Yes.
Sure, they hired you in as the.
Correct, yes, we're we were, we're very much looking at grant funding to potentially. Look at a facility, that's gonna take some time, there's, there was a large pot of funds, right now, we're in the. Uh, I would call it our our development of the grant strategy stage, Kara's actually handling that, she's a a Warren graduate, a. Graduate of the Ohio State University, she also is an environmental, she has an environmental specialty, which is why the solid waste districts are the particular client she handles. Did you have anything to add?
Yeah, we're just really in the planning phase, working Jennifer, uh, uh, researching what money they have gone for the past and where we can. You know, expand their reach, and you mentioned curbside recycling, that's a huge priority for Jennifer. Um, which really would take a lot of capacity building, so we're working on that and uh we're excited for that, that partnership and potentially uh composting also uh down the road.
And um, we had a presentation you had mentioned um from Sir Andrew on a blank.
That's Brett.
George Press, so how do you, what what is exactly your alignment with, how does that work?
Well, depending on your scope or services, we can sub, we sub him right in our contract. So you could enter a contract with KO and then we could sub to press public strategies based on what you need in terms of government relations. Um, you know, similarly, we had a partnership with him. Uh, set like seven million in appropriations projects, five million in capital budget, several in operating budget, so we work hand in hand, we have a. My team has been fantastic and furiously turning in to all our members of Congress and the senators, there are CBS requests on behalf of clients this year. We do the submission, we do the application, and he helps us on the government relation side facilitating those. So any client that elects to also have his services, we put that in a contract. So you could contract with him separately as well, but also we we sort of come as a as a fun package deal when that makes strategic sense.
Okay, and and he's with you on like how many of your clients?
Oh, probably, I have a.
Percentage wise?
I have a portfolio of about any time between like thirty-five and forty clients, he probably, uh, of those clients, probably about twenty. Elect for government relation services as well, that that's accurate.
So how do we get to the cost?
So, I mean, everything with me is very transparent and cut and dry, we we are seventy-five dollars an hour. And you scale your contract based on what you need. We, I have clients in the portfolio that have contracts as small as, you know, two thousand dollars a month. And then clients that are in the portfolio that are around ten thousand dollars a month, because they are are demanding that much grant writing. Compliance, the whole nine yards, so really, because no two municipality or nonprofit is the same. I build everything scaled on what you need, I have a two-page, pretty general, like, all-of-cart service items. And then also then AR hourly and what we recommend. So we also came to, I've been writing grants for twenty years, so I was with the county for ten, I was with United Waves prior to that. So we have a pretty turnkey, a small foundation takes us about ten hours to do a grant application. A federal grant application, and these guys could attest or counter me, we we estimate could take anywhere between generally sixty and like a hundred hours to complete. So if you're looking for a lot of grant writing on the federal side, you're gonna need a larger-scale contract. If you're looking for more on the state or local side, that contract's scaled smaller, um. Obviously, we're also cognizant, as I worked at the county, I handle our prevailing wage as well as our contracting. So we're also cognizant of, you know, when we get to the process of, does this have to go out for bid, what does that look like, so we work with the the entity on. How they wanna go about that.
Kirsten, we signed on with you, do you have like a sampler package, like a. Three-month, let's see what we can do for you, here's our big projects, put you to work to see, to test out?
So I, so I created a contract with a month-to-month out clause. Because that way you're not, we're not a a contract, we're a service contract where you're stuck with us for three years. If we're six months in and you're like, you know, this is just not working, we don't like the relationship, we don't like the productivity, you have an an out. Um, both, works both ways, I could just be like, you know what, where this isn't, you know, exactly what we signed up for, it's more work than what was quoted, we're gonna utilize our out. Um, we are a, uh, you know, I I tell everybody we're an upfront cost, right, because you're investing in us taking some strategic time to build out the. The strategy, we're probably not gonna get any funds in quarter one or quarter two of the contract, that's just the reality of the grant cycles. That's the reality of how grant funding works, but um. Because of our success rate and our and our, you know, our metrics, my goal is that first grant that we get you pays for our services, right? So whatever our contract size is, those first couple of grants, we have to be over the metric of what the contract is, so we can say, alright. Now you've seen a return on investment, now we have time to go after more and continue to get funds. I mean, our our municipalities, like the city, the, you know, and I'm very transparent about our clients because it's public record. The city of Strutters, and the city of Camel, and the city of Gerard, within six months of all those contracts, they got over a million dollars. And obviously, our contract size is nowhere near that capacity, we're just very strategic in what we go after and how we go after it. So it makes it a very worthwhile investment. I what finished this year twenty-four and didn't think, I was, I was like, are we gonna lose every client signed back on? And 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 then some, we continue to grow and we're happy about that because I love hiring and trying to keep. Uh, young talent in the valley and continue to grow and continue to hire, we're not going anywhere, so, you know, we're here to help any way that we can. We live here, work here, you know, wanna, I wanna keep these young people here to raise families here, so trying to build a firm that keeps them here. No, I'm I'm gonna be forty this year, so, I'm feeling some type of way about it, um, but, but, so that's, I mean, so I don't, I always say, you know, grants are no guarantee, there's. You could spend and not see any return on your investment, I can't upfront promise you that you you will, but I just know that we are very good at what we do and how we do it.
I agree with that.
And I just have a fantastic team, I get to be upfront and talk, but they do the work, they're 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 at ten o'clock at night still, still plugging away at a grant. And and I know they're doing that, because because sometimes that's what you have to do.
You came on our radar, I saw you work at DC with your staff last year, and I was impressed by that, and we had talked about. All these big projects we have, the dog, and the nine-one-one center, corner, these things, and we talked about potentially hiring a grant writer. And then it came to us, well, why hire one when we could just utilize services like you, we don't have the whole overhead and the. Health coverage and there's dead times when they're not working, you're not doing anything, what do we do with them then, so this seemed like a route that we're interested in, um. The one other thing that came up as we discussed this before, we wanted somebody we thought was in our best interest, that didn't have any other counties, because we don't wanna compete against. Astroville or Mahoning for the same money, um.
And we we don't have a county.
And I like that you said that, that was one of the things there, and we would hope that. This one started trend, all of a sudden, we've signed, you have three counties now and we're all in the same boat.
No, 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 no. We don't want three counties, uh, at all, so, but and and not at all.
I don't think.
No, 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 um, and that's sort of too, like, one of the things we look at is we just have to. Help your bottom line, return more money to the general fund, so sometimes, yes, the the big projects are fantastic. But I also, my team, we wanna get you to fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, that could go subsidize essentially your other budgets, so general fund dollars get kicked back. Like, I understand how the general, the the different funds work, because I worked in a county for a decade, so. Our responsibility is help your bottom line too, like, the big projects and the five million and six million and one million dollar grants. Sometimes it's better and more strategic to go after five, two-hundred-thousand-dollar grants than to just shoot the the singular home run shots. So our thing at the end of the day is to just ensure that we're bringing dollars back in.
And we have things like right now, we just put in our four requests, the earmarks to Senator Moreno and to the congressman, and. We have Josh working for us right now, we have the service, I mean, he's in DC doing that to follow along. Those earmarks, that's the type of service I guess we'd be looking for, if we can get a return on those things and these new ideas, that's why I think it's worth the investment.
Can I ask a question? You don't mind?
Yes.
So, understanding, understanding the whole grant and getting, oh, sorry, Beth Carmichael with Trumbull County, towards, of course. Understanding the whole issue with, and I don't do a lot of grants, but what I have found in my very small office is the capacity to actually. Um, implement, do the work, so let's say that the county gets a million-dollar grant, and who's gonna do the work?
Do the work, yeah. Yes.
Because I watch Carrie and I watch Julie and all of their teams already stretched to get the grant and then implement the grant, especially with the ARP funds that have come through. I I, again, this isn't on me, but I just see what everybody else is doing, so how does the implementation take place once the grant happens? how does the implementation take place once the grant happens when you've got a, a small staff really that's already dealing with the grants that they're getting? That's just a question. You know, I don't have a dog in the hunt, so it doesn't matter, but that's just.
Yeah, we'll help facilitate the implementation as far as we can in terms of drawdowns, reporting, assisting you with compliance. But then it really comes to that strategic grant planning. And in, in my twenty years here in the valley, I think we need a little bit more of the strategic grant planning. We do fantastic with project planning and engineering. But it's that grant planning that if these dollars come in, how do we implement? And we have to have those discussions on the front end before we apply for the grant. And that's sort of a lot of the coaching we do with our clients. Like, do you, is this a match? Do you understand if it's a match, you can't spend unless we have, we could spend the money first, which comes back to my conversation of ensuring you have more dollars in the general operating fund. So you have the ability to spend first and get the reimbursement. I mean, we, we, I'm dealing with some ear, large earmark clients right now from a few fiscal years ago who didn't under, understand that they had to spend first. So now we're having to work with them to restructure their budget so they get the drawdowns for reimbursement. So we're, I'm very cognizant and the team is trained and very cognizant on how to help you do that. So we don't get six million dollars that you have no way to implement. That is, implementation is key. Um, additionally, I also wrote a grant course, a six-chapter grant course. So we're also very interested. I'm an education is the great equalizer. If you have folks within your department who want to learn more about how to grant write and strategy build, so you don't have to have an out, outside service. I look at it like this. If we're doing our job properly over time, you should have funds to internally hire. We should, we shouldn't be a next ten, fifteen-year solution. We should be a, how do we build capacity over the next one to five years to where then you could hire some more folks within each department to do grants or have that service?
Question, Kristen. Julie Green. So, and I agree with probably ninety-nine percent of what you said. Uh, and they do a fantastic job. I'm already working with them for the city of Gerard, for our C D B G program. Um, but I don't know that the implementation question landed. I think what Beth was alluding to is, and I agree with that part, is grant writing is about ten percent of the overall productivity hours, man-hours. Ninety percent is implementation. Everything from conducting environmental reviews, which we do in-house, coordination with the, making sure that the procurement is done properly, making sure that the uh correct funding and fund numbers are used. Working with the Trumbull County Auditor, working with probably, I don't know, a dozen agencies on every single grant that we administer. So that, I just wanted to make sure the commissioners understood that. And um, but with that being said, the next point I wanted to make is, you know, I do think it's a great idea to have these grant uh classes, courses for all county offices. I've mentioned this to you before. I think that there's no reason why every department in this county should not be applying for at least one grant. But many of the grants that we apply for have no administration tied to them. And so, for example, our office, you know what our budget was set at this year and the, you know, the challenge we had with that. We have to somehow figure it out to pay for with administration of grants. Um, that's not going to allow us to hire more staff. So, you know, those are some things that I want the commissioners to be aware of. I, I don't know of any grants other than C D B G that provides a significant amount of uh administration. And for example, just with the allocation program, this year you're getting six-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars. Like, we just got this yesterday. We'll be presenting it to the county commissioners next week sometime if everybody's um submitted applications. We are only able to take twenty percent of that for admin. And out of that, around thirty thousand has to be used for fair housing. It's a requirement. So I just wanted to make sure that you understood what we are doing. I, I wanted to be able to explain this to the new commissioners when you get an opportunity to visit us. And, you know, we can explain um the ongoing grant programs that we already administer. I think we've applied for not two hundred, but at least twenty this year. It's only April. And we have about twenty that are ongoing.
Well, Julie, you write more grants than anybody. You're like a grant group for the county.
No, it's, it's county-wide. A lot of people.
I know. What I'm saying is you, you're the ones we see in these meetings. Could someone like her be of assistance to you? Something that would make you be able to do your job better?
Absolutely.
Or bring in more money?
I already work with them, through the city of Gerard. As I mentioned, I work, I just had a two-hour meeting or one-hour meeting with Gina last week. So they're, they are going to facilitate the neighborhood revitalization grant program application, which is highly competitive. And that could bring another seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to our county. I couldn't do that with the staff I have and the work program that we have. We're, but with that being said, we are applying for six or seven.
So this one we stepping on our toes and enhancing.
We, and, and I, having a, a P E R's pension for a small amount of time, I don't wanna come in and step on any of these steps. We're not here to, that is not my purpose for, we're just here to enhance. And we are hiring a, a, a C P A compliance person to help us facilitate. I'm handling all our compliance for clients right now, and I don't wanna do it anymore. Um, so we are gonna bring a specialist in that would be able to help with that. And we do do environmental reviews as well. So we would be able to assist with that.
I'd like a cost.
And one of the things that I wanna push is, for example, we found out today, it's likely one of our clients is gonna get a hundred thousand dollars from Google. Um, there's no reason though that the data processing centers at, at, at county levels aren't also applying for those dollars. And those are just things that are not on government's radar. Just because for nobody, for just lack of, we know the federal grants, we know the state grants, what are we missing that still exists that we can apply for? And that's really the lane we wanna be in. What are you not going after that you can be, that you just were unaware of? That's really my, my role.
I just thought, man, there's gotta be, there gotta be a ton of animal lover grants that are out there, foundations, things like that. That when it comes to dog poundings that we're missing, there's gotta be.
So. And, and we also wanna help the townships also. Uh, I, you know, there's things out there. So, um, I think we need some type of initial proposal from you. You'll let the board look at it, and then we'll look at it and then sit down with you and, and really discuss it and move it on.
Yeah.
Step.
So we got stuff on the pipeline in D C right now that I'd love to get some.
And we'll be there. I'll probably take most of the staff too.
So you do see C D B G in there?
Oh, yeah. We're doing a lot, we're doing a lot of man-hours too.
Great. That's great.
Kristen, I wanna thank you. Your presentation was awesome.
And, and my, and the rate for the, for your partner, oh, what's his rate?
So he could either be assumed in our contract or he can be separated out.
He's at the seventy-five dollars?
He's not. I don't, I believe he's, I believe he's a little bit more expensive, but I don't know. So that would be how much of his time he wants dedicated to the contract.
And wouldn't he actually do?
So he handles all of our meetings with state and federal officials. And that also includes, you know, sometimes we're just thinking about our members of the Ohio House and Senate and the federal House and Senate. We meet with the Ohio Department of Development, we meet with the Ohio E P A, we meet with um the S B A in the state, just because our portfolio, we're also with for-profit clients who are eligible for equipment upgrades and all sorts of different programs at S B A and other places. So.
Is Josh a registered lobbyist?
Yes.
I mean, that would be kinda what he does, I believe.
And how we work on it, it's, we, we are the party of interest in his registration. And then it's on behalf of, correct. So because you're not paying him, you're paying us. So just so you don't have to do the, the lanky repaying that, that I have to do. So, and, and.
Well, I, I think the presentation was great. I know that uh Kristen was working, um, when I was at the Chiaga two week, or last week, Chiaga, uh, you, you just picked up that account. And um, I've heard a lot of good things. Um, I, I almost feel as the, uh, you're in the shark tank here. I feel like we, we just, we just, we just put, this is the shark tank here, presentation. Um, but um, commissioners.
I think this is a great proposal. If you can get us a proposal and then we can set up additional meeting with you and I think if someone, you know, this board wants to move on.
And I like the fact too that you already work with, Julie, you've worked with Kristen.
I've done it for twenty years.
You, we have local
Yeah.
women here that, you know, that we would be employing on a local level. Um, like Commissioner Bernard said.
And she's got former congressional staffers on her team. She's got former directors of board of elections. And she's, she's got an eighteen of what she has.
Commissioners, if I may, just one final, one thing that I have heard in this presentation that I haven't heard in other presentations, Alexi McEntee-Bush in the Resources Department, one thing that I've heard in this presentation that I have not heard in other presentations. And maybe they just weren't able to expound on it as much, but I'm extremely grateful to hear about your strategic grant planning. Uh, because if we don't have a foundation here in this county, if we don't have the monies to hire the people to, uh, so you may secure us a six-million-dollar grant for, I don't know, some beautiful safety services complex per se. But if we don't have the funds upfront to make sure that we can staff that sustainability, then what good is that six-million dollars? So if that is something that they can bring to the table, I mean, human, human resources is gonna solely advocate for that. Because we know that ninety percent of our, well, seventy to eighty percent of our costs, except for sanitary engineer, is in payroll. Um, see, that's hard because I plugged that for you. You're welcome. Okay. So, um, but with that being said, those things that are very important to me because I think a lot of times it's that if you build it, they will come mentality. However, I'm kinda that, I don't wanna call myself a Debbie Downer, but I'm more realistic and I'm like, but how are we going to sustain that? How are we going to make sure that we have the foundation for that long-term?
Yep.
And not lose jobs because we built bigger and then we didn't plan for the future. So.
And we work already, just as a final note, with all your, we work very well with the Port Authority and the Chamber and Lake to River with all our clients. When, you know, we look at ourselves as the bottom rung that funnels, funnels up. We're not handling those twenty and thirty million-dollar projects at all. That's to uh Julie and their team and the, and, and all those folks. We're looking to just, how do we bring in funds for your, you know, that day-to-day operating that it's a county. That's what we need. So that's really where we want our specialty to be. We're not trying to bring in, you know, the next Google to here. We want that. And we'll help write grants for it, but that's not our role. So we strategically very understand what our role is. So.
Well, I agree with Commissioner Bernard, right? Right? We have official proposals up to us. And we can act on this pretty quick. We're not, just around. We got other departments. I know we can use grant help. And we got our own departments that are doing it. If we have a
I have one more question.
Team behind this. I love it.
And I feel free to reach out at any time if you have any additional questions as we go.
Yeah, there's one more question. Um, this might be for the commissioners, Julie Green. So it sounds like she does facilitate, or they do facilitate, you know, the strategic planning that I know that Gary and I already do within our sort of little sphere. But I do believe that that is necessary and much needed for us countywide.
Agreed.
And so are we, is that something that you would facilitate countywide for every single department? Or do you want the commissioners and the county to take a look inward, have each department have tasks with, you know, what are, what are your uh net needed improvements for the next five years, ten years?
I mean, uh, we would happily facilitate that if the entire first, and the entire rest of fiscal year twenty-four was, okay, help us with our appropriations and things that are already in the pipeline. But we need department-by-part, department strategic grant planning?
Yeah.
We could just do that. If you're like, we don't even want you to start focusing on applications strategically planned first. We can do that. Or we could do them simultaneously. But if we're doing them simultaneously, more hours, more costs. So I'm trying to be very, you know, cost benefit analysis here for you. So it's just, you know, really, I could give you a couple of different proposals. So you could see what I'm thinking you need. And you come back and then, no, we don't like that, or, or counter or wherever. I think that might be the most strategic thing to do, i- if I may take that liberty.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, I, I think so. And then once we see that, then we can address the other questions. But what I like is the accessibility. I mean, you're local, you're here. If we need to get in contact, you, it's like, you know, can you meet us tomorrow at nine o'clock? You can say yes.
Unfortunately, we're out of mail. It might not, it might not be me, but they'll be.
And we, we have talked earlier of the part of the one million that we had that came from the clerk. You know, we had talked about fifty to a hundred thousand there if you're marking. And if that's an investment that's gonna bring us in more, that'll make us feel more comfortable to engaging in upping the package longer term, once we see some return on investment.
And that's our thing too, right? Like, if you're gonna build yourself as a grant firm, you better bring in grant money. And if you don't, we don't expect you to get. I am very like, I am a very, I'm a sports analogy person, so we are very, you know, very strategic in how we go about that. I'm very competitive. And the team, the team knows that. They get a Kobe Bryant or a Tiger Woods or a Michael Jordan quote every other day. And they just roll their eyes, but that's okay. But that's how we're very, you know, I, I, you know, Kobe Bryant said, bet on yourself and double down. That's how I approach the work. We, we have bet on ourselves and we're, we're building out a good platform. So we really, we're here, we wanna help. And I'll, I'll be happy to get you a proposal over by end of the week.
Great.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank.
Kristen, your presentation is nice.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Like I said, I feel like, I feel like you're in the shark tank. Commissioner, you ever watch that show?
I just, I just keep when we get the next, the next like presentation.
Next. Like, you know, people present themselves. Okay, um. Well, you guys are.
Go ahead.
Yeah, you wanna do meeny, meeny, miny?
I have two kind of quick things.
Name Beth?
Beth, that was Carmichael with Trumbull County Tourism. Um, Julie Green and I have been tasked with America Two-Fifty Heritage Trees that is coming in next Wednesday. There is a planting scheduled for one P M, rain or shine, next Wednesday, the twenty-third at City Hall. We um wanna make sure you guys have that on your calendars. Also, because it is like a dedication. And as I was reading through the information, I don't even know if you noticed this. We're one of only eight counties, we're kicking off this heritage tree program in all of Ohio. So um, so we're the, one of eight counties. Um, I would like somebody to speak on behalf of the county. I will draft up some bullet points. As the president of the board, would you like to do that? Or would somebody else like, who's passionate about Two-Fifty?
I'm passionate about life. Let's just do it.
Alright, I will send some, um, I'll send this over to you then. Uh, and then the other.
Thirteen years ago.
Oh, bless you. The other quick question is, um, last year, uh, in, in partnership with Commissioner Malloy, Trumbull Tourism organized a um, a north-west Trumbull County Economic Development slash Tourism Tour. We had about twelve or thirteen people attend. It was very successful. It included somebody from U S D A World Development that generated some additional um interests and some opportunities for grant programs within Trumbull County. Um, we're doing the next one on Friday, May thirtieth. It's weird for me to just say it's being hosted by Trumbull Tourism. So what I would like to ask the commissioners, if it is okay if I say that it is um being coordinated with the Trumbull County Commissioners in partnership with Trumbull Tourism. I didn't wanna put your, all three of your na, or put the commissioner's office on that invite unless I had that agreement with the three of you.
I agree.
See, there's a problem.
So that's, is that okay with you, Commissioner Bernard?
Yeah.
Okay. So uh, you wanna put that on your calendar?
Thank you for doing, thank you for.
Of course. Um, save the date so it hopefully be going out. You guys will receive those, but I'll also um follow up with Amy as well, make sure that those are, that's on your calendar.
The first one was awesome. And I think, I think we're probably gonna get a hundred percent retention of
Yeah, we, we.
Nick Santucci and people like that. Arian was on the bus that they were pumped about.
And we used um Sharon Grover's Ridgeview Tour. She has a fourteen-passenger that was actually paid for, um, or partially paid for through A R P funds. We use that. I'm concerned we're, we're gonna have more interest this time because it was so successful the first time. So we are going to a thirty-three-passenger vehicle um from a new transportation company out of Mineral Ridge called Roller Transportation. So we're still keeping it in, in county, which is good as well.
What area?
It's northeast Trumbull. So I am, I've confirmed several. One that I will say, well, the first one is lunch will be at Peter Allen Inn. Um, and Dick Thompson will probably be speaking about his role and what he's done with that particular property. Also, I've confirmed, um, I think it's Matthew, I think it's, we, I might have just made that up. Um, with scenic, with this O D N R scenic employee. Um, with scenic, with this O D N R scenic and wild, thank you.
Yep.
Scenic and Wild Rivers, um, and we're meeting him in Orangeville. So you'll see a put-in location for Pymatuni Creek, Wood Creek, which a lot of people don't know about. So it'll be wide variety. There are, um, three businesses, what I'm also reaching out to, I'm just waiting on confirmation now. So it'll, it's going to be a good day.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Beth.
Beth, can you pass, can you also mention that again, Richard?
Oh, so yeah, so we just found out today with the, um, with the digging of the tree, apparently it's more than just Julie and I putting a shovel in the ground. Um, T N P has offered to, uh, do the digging for us for next week, which is a really great, they've got all the equipment and it's a two-inch wide, whatever.
Trail.
Thank you.
Whatever that's called.
Burlap.
You're a normal hole. So, um, thank you very much.
Thanks to Beth for doing all the press.
Yes, I got a press release invitations for that and then save the days and we're here as well.
Thank you, Beth. Doing a wonderful job with tourism.
Thank you.
Um, Zach, Snack?
Yes, exactly. Exactly. I think it went first. I, they requested a meeting for giant, uh, agenda items were put on for phase four of the bike trail. So, um, we are working, so Commissioner Bernard, I don't know how much you know about phase four of the bike trail. Uh, do you want me to go, you know, further in depth on that? Or do you just want me to talk about the items that, you know, kind of are sitting in front of you?
Let's go with the items that are here first.
Okay, because I could go on for days. So that's why I figured that out. Um, so, um, we have finished design work. We are in the midst of acquiring property. We have already acquired twenty of the twenty-three properties. We are down to two final property owners and three properties in connection thereto, to those two property owners. One is Ohio Edison. Um, that agreement, um, has already been approved by legal counsel and is waiting for your approval. Um, I did attach, those are the last two items or last two pages in the packet that I prepared for you. Um, so those are the two amounts that are highlighted. I highlighted them for you guys. You can see those. Um, we are, it's an eighty, twenty grand. So, uh, we received, we have to pay out a hundred percent, but we receive eighty percent of it back from the federal government, uh, in terms of reimbursement. So your total outlay would be twenty percent of those two costs. And then also, uh, the, uh, third one is the, the three pages, huh? Um, is for Norfolk Southern. That is the last right-of-way acquisition that we need. Um, and I highlighted that amount as well. And again, that is uh, eighty, twenty grand. Uh, we have to pay out a hundred percent of, because of how the, um, funding works on acquisition. So we pay out a hundred percent. We get eight percent back from the federal government, uh, in terms of reimbursement. Um, so we have, um, so your second page in kind of shows you what you have spent out already in terms of federal dollars and then, um, what your twenty percent match is in terms of, um, you know, what you have spent out as well, you know, in terms of the local match. Um, so I was just looking at you guys for approval to put this on the agenda for next week. Uh, yeah.
You had mentioned to me, and I had some conversation with the commissioners concerning it after our meeting.
Yep.
Um, if we didn't follow through with the match or this, uh, for the bike trail, we would be responsible for a payback. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes. So on the second page in the first paragraph, so on the first page in the second paragraph, or in the first paragraph there at the end there, uh, it does say that you would have to pay back the, uh, federal dollars that were spent out on the project so far, and that's the one point three three million dollars.
Now. That for us is undoable, of course, but Commissioner, do you have a question? Because I think you have a question.
We want, they want eight hundred and seventy-five thousand from us. That's undoable, right?
No, 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 no. So we have grants covering the local match for the construction, which is a seventy-five. So I would just need the twenty percent on the last two acquisitions.
Which is how much? Where's that at?
Uh, so I do, so it's twenty percent of, I, and I know me and Rick figured this out. So forty-one over twelve is fifty-seven, which is like, say, twelve thousand, you know, run off some numbers there.
Zach, do you think?
Uh, not yet.
Okay.
I would say you have a whole packet here. You're having to ask, you want to go in there with the asks.
Wait, Julie had a question.
Well, he, he said he has it.
No, no, no. Like I said, so the, the total ask is the amounts that I've highlighted, um, which is the hundred thirty thousand, two forty-eight. And. All right.
That's for the Norfolk Southern.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. And then, yep, and then the last few pages in your paper clip copy.
Yes.
Forty-one thousand, eight hundred, and then twenty-one thousand, two forty. So while you have to pay the hundred percent, because that's how the federal fronts work, we get eighty percent of that back from the federal government in return, you know, within thirty to sixty days. So on the one thirty-eight, you're talking twenty-six thousand, twenty-seven thousand, right around there. And like I said, on the other amount, it's about twelve thousand-ish. So you're talking about almost a forty thousand dollar outlay. When it's all said and done, when all the big work is finalized and all, or, you know, grant money is restored.
Approximately fifty grand.
All of these funds were committed by journal.
This doesn't make sense.
So that needs to be stated.
What, what was that?
Julie Green, all of these funds for this project were committed by journal action years ago. And so as I've mentioned, I don't know if I made this speech here this year. Lisa doesn't think I have. But this is a project that has been going on for twenty-four years. The commissioners initiated it, funded it, pursued it, pushed it throughout all boards. And we are in the last phase of the bike trail. At every step, these were journal actions that were supported by the board of commissioners. I realize that you're new and that you were not here when this, these steps were taken. I just want you to understand the history here and the amount of money and time and effort that was spent to develop this bike trail. And now that we are in the eleventh hour to not complete it, to not support it, in my opinion, is a huge waste of public time and money. That's all.
I agree.
I agree.
Well, I think we all agree with that, but, and we all support it. The problem is the past boards never allocated the money for it.
Yes, they did. They committed it through resolution.
So where'd the money at?
It's, it was committed via.
But they never sent it to us.
I'm not, I'm not a C P A. All I know is when you, when you, when you pass a resolution at the board commissioners level that commits funds, those funds are, should be identified in a fund somewhere where you're planning to draw them from. Now, if, you know, that requires some research on the part of your office to identify what fund they came out of. I'm sure Zach had his copies of those resolutions somewhere.
Yeah.
That he can provide the commissioners with. And then determine from there, working backwards with staff who potentially was here at the time, to say, yes, we, the board of commissioners stated that we would commit the twenty percent required for the professional engineering services. And I also want to add that Zach, uh, applied for and obtained a half a million dollars to count as the local matching funds for the construction piece. So when this goes out for bid, hopefully we get good bids. Who knows, you know?
Yeah.
How prices have gone up. There's state capital money, not state capital.
Well, there's, uh, Plain Ohio Trail Fund.
Plain Ohio Trail Fund.
Half a million dollars available to pay for the majority of what we would have otherwise needed from the commissioners for local funding. And we also have three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in state capital appropriations as well.
Yes.
How much money do we have set aside for maintenance of the bike trail?
That's, you know, that's your yearly allocation. So, you know, there isn't a certain dollar amount. It's, you know.
So it's, as of right now, we have zero saved.
Correct.
To maintain.
And Julie Green says, say again. To state again, the maintenance of the bike trail was committed to when the commissioners decided to apply for the congestion and engagement air quality funds. It's just something that was baked into the request in the project. Typically, there aren't funds available at state level for maintenance of a recreational trail or bike trail. It's very limited. Just wanted to share that.
Uh, Gary Newbrough, Sanitary Engineer. Commissioners, I started with this planning commission in ninety-nine. And the overall goal was the state wanted a bike trail from East Liverpool to Lake Erie. And as far as I know, is it, all the lines in Columbia and Mahoning and Ashbyola are done.
Ashbyola is done. Uh, this will be the last section in Trumbull County and then there's going to be.
Is this the last, is this the very last link in the entire thing?
No.
I know. There's a couple.
So there's still a couple other counties.
But it will connect, it will connect three counties.
All right, but this is the last little link in Trumbull.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, I, I just want to put that out. This is a statewide effort. That's why ODOT has been pouring all this grant money into it throughout the years.
Bottom line is after the eighty percent, it costs the county a match of, I believe, fifty, fifty something dollars to complete. Julie had mentioned, this has all been part of journal actions through the years. The commissioners started this. That gauge?
Well, if I'm looking at the math here, it's forty-one thousand plus twenty-one, that's sixty-two thousand. We'd have to pay twenty percent of it. We would all, eighty percent would be gone, right? Because it's only going to cost us.
Well, on those two, it'd be twelve. What I'm doing on that.
Yeah, it should be twelve thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
Twenty some thousand.
Well, and then, but then, uh, Norfolk Southern is one thirty-eight, so that's another twenty-six.
But you do realize, commissioners, we have to come up with the money upfront and then be paid back the eighty percent. So.
But from what they're saying, we may have money already set aside, you know, funds somewhere that they already allocated.
I, 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 so the way we have done the right way is we have transferred it from fund nine twenty-one.
We've looked at that.
From fund nine twenty-one, if I can remember the fund correctly. So I think it's named by the sales tax. If I ran on the fund number. So it was, you just.
It was committed to journal action, whether or not the funds were identified.
So we just identify them in each journal action where the funds are coming from and let the our commissioner's office, when we work with Shara, to determine what fund number that is year to year.
I don't, I mean, I'm not, that's not my, although I am. I tend to get it, I, I. Um, although, also I will say is, I, I have looked, we've looked over the budget review, like, we know what funds are out there, oh, one through nine, 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 and there is no dedicated bike trail fund. However, to what Commissioner Bernard was saying, back however many years ago, twenty-four, whatever the case may be, what realistically, and I hope what we're looking to do further in this county is when we commit to something via resolution, the fund should be identified, the money should be set aside, and we cannot sustain what we have been doing in the past further. That's all I'm saying. Not your fault, not anybody's fault at this table. None of us, well, I take that back. Maybe some of us were here twenty-four years ago, but maybe they didn't have a, they weren't a board of commissioners. They weren't on the board of commissioners and they weren't obviously able to advise the board of commissioners at that time. This is something, going back to what we said with the grant writer, sustainability.
Yeah.
We can, we can throw millions of dollars out there, but if we cannot sustain it, what the heck are we doing?
I, I, I agree. And, and if we didn't have one point three million dollars payback, I, I'd tell you stop the project now. Because it is not sustainable because we don't have.
Right.
Funds to maintain the trail and all that.
Yeah.
I get that and I understand it and don't want to put you guys under more stress than you have to.
I mean.
But we're, we're just at a point now, it's, it's, it would cost more to stop than it would to be overseen.
That's not my, I'm not here to advocate either way.
And Julie Green, just one more. I mean, this has been a question of first twenty-five years. It's a matter of prioritizing. And I think that, you know, I understand we have a lot of much greater needs in the county. I get that. But at what point do you look at it from a, a historical perspective where it's been going on for twenty-five years, this is the last leg? I think that that should weigh in your decision making. Also, from a recreational tourism perspective, the Great Ohio River Greenway draws hundreds, if not millions of people annually. I mean, it's, it draws a huge, uh, economic benefit for recreational tourism and Beth can, I'm sure, speak to that. I did a, a capital budget request ten years ago where they said that there were studies done that say that for every trip, every day trip, that somebody comes and uses our, our system, brings ten dollars per visitor in terms of buying gasoline, going to a restaurant, going to a, a convenience. So it's, it's an economic development bonus as well. And it's also quality of life. And that's, as you know, huge for new companies wanting to locate here. They want a certain level of quality of life.
Julie, he had mentioned in the two that Kimberly Clark really liked this idea, this bike trail.
Yeah.
Where it was going to be the last leg located.
Yeah, correct. And that was one of the things that was.
You want me to recap with him?
Um, with the Port Authority, um, they, they mentioned that, you know, that was one of the reasons they selected sightless. You know, the bike trail, you know, being adjacent. Yeah.
I was just wondering. I, I mean. I, you know, I mean, we're kind of, we're at a point where we probably have to fund.
No, I know, but it's, it's bad stuff to pay for the future. It's like us saying, let's give every resident of Trumbull County, we're going to give them all a check for ten thousand dollars, but let's pay it going to effect in twenty forty. We'll do a residential today. And let the next board down the road worry about paying for all this stuff. And worry about the maintenance. By the time we had this bike trail done.
It's the maintenance.
It already needs to be repaved in a lot of areas. It's already got pitfalls. It's already got repairs.
Are there, are there grants available for, for repaving?
So that's what I was going to actually just ask you guys, that if you do enter into a contract with, you know, that K O, that I would love to be part of that and to help look for money for the bike trail. Because I'm willing to put in the work, you know, with her and, you know, there's other funds out there that I'm not aware of, but I'd be happy to apply for those.
If we get into a grant, this company, the.
She was just there. Shark Tank.
Yes.
Um, well. Zach, well, commissioners, listen, you know, I'm one commissioner, but I, 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 Julie has brought me in on this. She pretty elaborated to me on the past history of all this. I do believe that, uh, it's, it's this last leg and to blow all this that has already been done would be ridiculous. We're going to have to find some way to, to fund it.
Well, you had come up with fifty thousand, you come up with a million.
We'll have to fund it somewhere.
Yeah. Well, Julie Green, I just have one more thing to say. Everything we do is playing catch-up. The unsorted areas left concern. I've been working on them with Gary for twenty, a quarter of a century. The reason we're doing that is because people in the nineteen seventies and sixties didn't extend sanitary sewer to low-income neighborhoods right outside the city. And so we're tasked with tackling that, mostly Gary, mostly Bob, but we help. And it's, it takes away from our ability to be proactive in other areas. So that's just one example, uh, allowing septic systems to be built on our soils in this county. They're, they're all failing because we have the worst soils in Ohio. So literally everywhere you look as a county, it seems, at least in our office, that we are playing catch-up or fixing the mistakes of the past. So I, 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 I just want to make that point because it's nothing new. But we have to do it. We can't just let it go. We have to continue to solve these problems that were dealt to us to keep moving forward and making our county a better place.
We talked about that yesterday, the other vision commissioner, with the fact that we don't have sewer resources, infrastructure in place for housing these community, you know, we need housing and you need those types of, uh, infrastructure.
And I'm glad you brought that up, Commissioner. Um, I would like to publicly, publicly request, and I've requested the partners this. We are the Economic Development Office. We have not been invited to one of those meetings. I know that it's not on you to do that. We'll reach out to the facilitators. But whenever there's an economic development conversation, either myself or Nick should be involved.
I would agree. I don't disagree with that. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah. Then, the next meeting, we'll get you a date on that.
I just wanted to fill you guys on two projects, um, that you guys are up on too. Uh, the bridge or the slide repair up in Bristol, we're going to be starting that May first. So that section of trail will be reopened hopefully, um, this summer, uh, depending on what other work we have to get done to, uh, get that trail reopened. And that was outflashing community grant funds that we received through the governor's office. That was a big part of the. Yeah, yep. And then we also, um, we're doing the bridge painting down in the house as well. Um, we're having a recon any from here. Um, and hopefully we'll get that started here soon too.
Good. All right. So how soon do you need this? Put on the agenda?
I was, if I, well, the Ohio Edison one, I can have to you next week. We're working with the prosecutors. I was, if I, well, the Ohio Basin one, I can have to you next week, we're working with the Prosecutor's Office and. They were happy to give back the Norfolk Southern one to me, that's with their attorneys right now. Um, so like I said, I could get Ohio's in on next week, if you wanted on next week, and then the Norfolk Southern one will wait till we get back the, you know, legal.
We'll have to see what fund, or what we could take that from.
Well, we need to know the total amount of those.
Okay.
If you can get us the total.
Yeah, once you get it on the agenda, put the amount.
I mean, for every, for, for all of them, so we'll know. I have to find the money.
Okay, thanks Zach.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Um. Gary.
Uh, Commissioners, we. Use ARP funds to do a sewer study of the Maplewood Park area. And, uh, study, please, I'll just go ahead and give you a coffee.
This is a.
Well, you, you sat in on the meetings when we were. Formulating this. Uh, preliminary study, and Julie is longer planning.
This is definitely a fine.
Gary, when do you have time to sleep?
This is why I, I am, uh, proposing that this is what the mosquito, mosquito lake study will. Need a document. Uh. This area here, turn to page twenty. I think that, that's a good diagram right there. Project area that we're looking at. Uh, in Hubbard Township. Uh, there, there's pipes on the orange, that's Hubbard System, over to green, that's our system, purple is Yokestown at the bottom, you can see that big. Line spot there, that's part of that consent decree. We need to build sewers. And contained within that area, if you look through the study, there's a thousand and twenty four residential homes. There are eighty seven commercial properties. And there's also sixteen properties that are zoned industrial, but I don't think there's sixteen industrial facilities down there. Uh. If you look through this, I, I mean, they, they went through a lot of research, a lot of work to figure out what is the best way to. Uh, sewer this area. Uh, the initial general plan was about half of this was supposed to go to the city of Hubbard, about half of it was supposed to go to the city of Yokestown. But with the Hubbard, city of Hubbard not having any capacity to plant. This study is showing us how we can send just about all of it to Yokestown.
Did we not have an area where Hubbard would swap some?
Yeah, we, we had to get created, there's some areas where we'll take some of the Hubbard's existing loads earned in hours, but then let them take a couple hours. If you look at Appendix G. That gives a general layout of where the sewers are going to be. Uh. And if you go to the pages. After that, I mean, it even tells you what size pipe needs to be put in, because it goes to different areas. There, Appendix G. And then if you look at Appendix X. Uh, I mean, Appendix H. There's the most important. Boy, yeah, well, Appendix H.
Seventy two mil.
Well, that's the high end, that's the thirty percent above, the, we're looking at about fifty six million to build is another thing. Forty million on the low end, and seventy two million on the high end.
Let's get that grant writer back in quick.
Well, my next step on this is that. Look in there, six million dollars for that design engineer. I would like to get the entire area designed, while we're still building Meadowbrook, and this will be the next big one. We use ARP funds to get for a design that was on that whole Meadowbrook area. We don't have the ARP funds now. So I'm thinking our next congressional earmark request. We need to. You know, put in for the design engineer for this project.
Uh, Commissioners, this is, just so I let you know. This is something that I, of course, have been working on with Gary, we've had several meetings on it with the, with the Fountain Prestige. They get earmarked two hundred fifty thousand for the study. We know where it's gonna be tied in, originally we thought Jacobs Road, now it's going to Crab Creek, I believe, right?
Right, yeah.
Um, we've had several meetings on it, this is a large, probably one of the largest projects in Trumbull County history.
This won't be the largest, I don't think, for engineers.
And, um. This is a consent decree that has been on hold for, how many years, thirty? Or forty?
The original deadline for this project.
How many?
Six, seventeen years.
Is that all?
Yeah, the original deadline for this project is twenty twenty, by the end of twenty twenty it's supposed to be done. But since we were doing so well on all the other ones that got so much done, and nobody thought it was possible, they, they're being lenient with us.
Gary, that's fifty three thousand dollars a house.
Finish by twenty thirty. Okay, that's what it costs.
And they, and they're okay with that, do you have any?
Yes.
Well, we had discussed the disparity with all these septic issues in our. Community, you know, I actually, I had the opportunity to go up and down those roads. And there's bubbling, rain, effluent. Kids playing kickball, ball goes down into the ditch. And the people have straight pipes coming out of their home into the ditch.
Right.
I mean, there's not even a leach field, there's no, I mean, it's.
It's, it's, it's an off-lot system.
And it's a, it's a health hazard, and. It is what it is, you know, the consent decree was made, and I guess. We have to find a way to, to make things happen.
Right, well this study was the first step along the way, just like that study we're asking for for mosquito lake area, that's the first step. It's something that worked from here.
This is, this is amazing here.
How much did this study cost?
It was about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, ARP funds.
Building so Prosecutor's Office, so, what, what, there was one area of the consent decree that I think we were gonna. Consider asking for a release from. Enforcement, that was, okay, so, okay.
By now the village, well, they've built it.
Okay, that's off the table too.
Yeah.
And that's what, I, I think you guys were just maybe talking over there, I was just wondering if. Not to abandon this completely, but maybe with this study, is this any sort of thing to go back to the EPA through that consent decree? And say, hey guys, are there any alternatives here, because this is a, you know, you, we're staring down a big amount of money here. Um. You know, maybe not, maybe they say, no, consent decree is what it is, you guys, you guys gotta live with it. Um, but I, I don't know, are there alternatives perhaps, other than, I mean, you guys are good at finding grant money, but it's a lot of money, so I just.
Well, if it's, I'm only planning on, I, I need enough grant funds to only make it thirty five dollars a month for thirty years. So if it's gonna cost us fifty thousand dollars per property, thirty five times twelve times thirty. I'm only gonna try to get it down to twelve point six, twelve thousand six hundred per house, so I have to cover. I need thirty seven thousand four hundred per house of grant funds.
Thirty seven million dollars.
Okay. That's why you gotta break it down into pages. Meadowbrook out there is thirty five million, I'm breaking that down and getting it done. And if we can get some congressional earmarks thrown in here, that's our only chance. If not, I might do through ten phases of OPWC and CDBG.
Buy their houses and move them to an area that's.
Well, everybody said that about Meadowbrook too. Well, you just buy it up and move them out, well, that's just not, that's a nice thing to say, but it's just not feasible. And I've been, I've got hundreds of policies years from the people on here. Telling me I need to. About how unhealthy it is. This is what Julie was talking about, fifty, sixty, seventies. People just go outside the city limits and pay a, uh, look, income tax. And tell the neighborhood, and, oh, there's a pipe going out to the ditch for your toilet, I mean, what the heck is that? And that's what they did, and they got away with it, now we gotta clean up the mess.
Yeah.
See the end of this project, sorry Gary.
I was, I was gonna send one of these out there.
Thanks Gary. Um. I see, Mr. Bellish is here, you're not on the agenda, but, you know. Okay.
About the electric aggregation, so those letters are, are about to go out. Um, DynaG doesn't look differently than the last time. Harv. They pretty much melted everybody at the same time, so. Um, DynaG is gonna be sending him between April twenty second and May thirteenth is at the top. That. So, not everyone will get a letter, um, until May thirteenth. So I know in another, uh. And another, uh, community I was working with caused some confusion. Hey, my neighbor got a letter, my neighbor got a letter, so, thought maybe we could do, um, an announcement from website. That it'll be between April twenty second and May thirteenth. So, it's just how, you know.
This is the. You want, what's this?
Uh, so seven point nine, then, May twenty sixth. I'll leave a copy in the chat, just wanna spread the word about that.
Okay.
It's just too many to mail once, so we spread it out.
Your suggestion was to get this on, um.
Uh, maybe the website, maybe do a, a sort of announcement. So that, uh, people know that, hey, if you don't get a letter on April twenty second, it's okay, because you're going out all the way through.
Right.
Um, that's, uh, a little more confusing, pass, uh. Just the way it is.
But they, I think, also for, what they should know is, I think at any time you can opt out.
Yes.
So if you don't, I mean, you're automatically opted in, if you don't opt out, but you can opt out if you want. So.
Yeah, yeah.
Some don't realize that, I know there's been a lot of controversy where, uh, well, they've put me in there now, what do I do, well. If you don't like, if you find apples to apples somewhere else, you know, you can opt out, but.
Yeah. Yeah, don't even do that, it's just, people are, are wondering why they didn't get a letter.
Yeah.
I just wanted to bring that up, that.
Confusing.
It goes all the way to May thirteenth, so I'll, I'll, uh. Copy.
Okay.
Um, the other thing I have is, is updated on, on the electric. Price, I do have, I do have another bid. On that, so I do have, uh, that she has. So, um. Um. So, so I did get another bid, but, yeah. But what, what happened last week is I lost the two other bids, um, so the letter. The letter that, that went out, there's a difference between a letter of authorization, letter of exclusivity. I thought based on meeting a letter of authorization was to go out to the other two surgeons, and, um. They, the word exclusive was in there, so since the word exclusive was in the letter to the suppliers. Uh, we can have the term share out. I, I lost the ability to bid for the other two suppliers, so. I'd like to ask the board to, to just have a letter of authorization, and then I'll be able to bring. So the one, one thing here, we might bring it today. It's because if it's something approved tomorrow, they can still do May start. Otherwise, we're looking at June, June start, or, or these fifty four, uh.
So, not to beat around the bush, Tom, I know you've been calling us, and you know, we've. You have had CCAO here, you and I had a conversation over the phone, you had stressed some. Some things that, uh, you know, it's kinda like out of my pay grade, what, what you, you know, PCO related stuff, I don't know, Commissioners.
That's fine, but this is really just about, is, does the board want a letter of authorization or letter exclusively has?
I, I think the board this time wants to go with CCAO and the, the deal that they have, and that's what I mean, I don't think you even need to, to get another bid for us. We've talked about this for over a year and a half, um, they're working with Sarah, they've looked at all the different rates, it's something we wanna try. And then take that time, we think we agreed, to compare then at the end of the term of this, the end of your term. See what type of service we have with somebody else, and, and then make a judgment into the future for both of them down the road, but so I think we've explored.
We discussed that.
I had discussed that.
Just, just to be honest across the board, that's something that we didn't.
That's.
You know, I like the direction being run by boards of county commissioners on the board and having a say in our, our colleagues. The fifty three other counties where we could be dealing with. Uh, and, and giving that a test, giving that a test, right?
Yeah, I, I guess, the issue was that they didn't, they didn't come with bid, they didn't come prepared. They for the May start, and we were gonna miss a month, and it's gonna go back to the. So, I've managed the accounts for fifteen years, and I've never missed a day. And, uh, now, uh, here we are, one month in, and they, they already missed a day. So, um, you know, there's that to consider too. Trump County is my top priority, they have sixty three or seventy three other counties that are in front of Trump County area. And, uh, so what, is that, the, uh. Clarification. Appreciate.
Okay, Tom.
Yeah, but they missed the deadline, it wasn't their fault, right?
That was who brought them in and asked for them.
Yeah, it wasn't their fault, but they missed the deadline.
Uh, we, we started, started in January, they, they were while we're in January, about the May start. Well.
I, I still don't think it was their fault.
I don't think we invited them back in until last, after we had our, I think, legislature meeting done in, in February. And met with other commissioners that were in the program that highly encouraged us to go that route. That's, that's where we said, let's give it a chance.
So, just needed to get that out there, Tom, cause I know you've been making a lot of calls and, um. We'll move forward with what the commissioners have decided to do. Including myself, and see how that works out. And you still have the aggregate on the. Residential. County. Residential. Alright.
I've got two months working on it.
Well, I, I understand your dismay, but you know, if you can understand, the commissioners made a decision, and, you know.
Yeah, okay, well, I was told like minutes ago. I. Just letting you know, it's a lot of room.
Yeah. Well, we understand, um. It isn't closing the door, we're gonna see how this works out, you know.
Alright.
It's not closing the door. Alright? Alright, Tom, thank you. Um. I think we can entertain a motion.
Oh wait, Commissioners. One more thing, I was talking to Lisa about this earlier. We want to schedule a public hearing for the Pennington sewer project. And the resolution is gonna be on next week's agenda. When it's scheduled, and, uh, it's gonna be in that week of March. So the question is, we want to have a public hearing on the Wednesday or Thursday.
Give us the dates, we'll learn our schedule, so usually we're given to us.
Wednesday, the twenty eighth, but that would be the workshop.
Yeah, Wednesday, the twenty eighth, and workshop day, and Wednesday, the twenty ninth.
Twenty ninth would be the regular meeting, he's wanting to have it possibly Wednesday.
Well, either the twenty eighth or twenty ninth, November one.
Of May.
Right.
I, I'm, I'm gone on the twenty ninth, so that, if I'm gonna be available, it would have to be the twenty eighth.
Alright, so twenty eighth.
Maybe. Go on the twenty eighth also, so you might have by yourself.
Alright, so maybe we go to June fourth, it looks like we'll stick it to the next week, June fourth.
Soon fourth would be a lot better. June fourth would be a lot better.
June fourth or September.
That's an evening.
Right, so, yeah, yeah.
And that's for which one, Pendleton?
Pendleton Gilmer. You got a heart picture in there.
And, uh, will be somewhere in Latasha.
It'll be at, uh, La Brea, um.
You have to confirm that with the school still or do you?
Yeah, that's the next thing I gotta do. This might change, but I gotta call them.
Motion adjourned.
This is Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Sir Bernard.
Yes.